You know, I sent you a copy of this.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is quite a lot. Yeah. I guess. No. Yeah. I know.
I know so. So one of the trips we did.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, I want to get that.
I think that.
I made some copies of it. Oh, no. I just, I have, do you want me? Do you want to do that now or just?
You gotta stay where you're at. You got it. Okay. Keep it cheerful. Okay.
I hope that's where it is. Maybe I'll send him a text.
Yeah.
We already spread out a lot.
Like that. It's not too much.
How many time?
Oh, thank you.
Change back some.
Keeps on it, please.
Oh, there you are.
He didn't keep some loans. He didn't get them. Oh. He's got a screen.
Just set on that reminder. So it would stand out, but I think I've done that for so many weeks now. But people just.
That's where we. I did agree. Why do you mean I pulled it up?
I mean, I know it's a dumb thing.
Cause that was. It was like a C P U or something. Yeah.
Yeah. No aggression. Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's your name? I don't feel like we need to be.
Yeah.
But I, I, I read it pretty carefully and I said on a last Lisa earlier.
Hard.
Last week. Yes. And.
Question in front of the procedure. In the beginning.
So we'll open the public hearing and I think we'll give everybody five minutes. And then when everybody's had a turn. Another minute for anybody. So nine twenty. Are we all set? Hey, then I will call this meeting to order and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we don't have microphones today, but I'll ask everybody to speak up. We've got maybe 20 minutes worth of county business to do and then we'll open up the public hearing. Everybody will have five minutes maximum to speak. And after everybody's had a chance to speak, you know, if anybody feels they need to respond directly to something, you know, you can get another, another minute to do so. If that sounds reasonable. Roll call. Mokler.
Here.
Graylow.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Daisy.
Here.
Are there any conflicts of interest to declare?
I, I have been on the Spirit Mount Trust for decades. I was a board member back in the eighties. And because of that, I recuse myself from the hearing at the planning commission. In knowledge that I would again be working on that same subject here. And that would have a chance to talk about it at this point.
Okay. And I, I, I don't feel that I have a conflict of interest, but I feel that I need to disclose that I've been a member of Spirit Mount Trust for many years. Being a member means sending in your 10 bucks a year and, and reading, reading the newsletter or not as you, as you choose. I've never been on the board. I have a financial interest and so I do not consider that a conflict of interest for me.
And the interest of open disclosure, I also have been a member of Spirit Mount Trust. I'm actually not totally sure whether my membership has lasted or not at this point, so I may or may not have been my most recent. But I'm a long time fan of Spirit Mount and I also was employed during the summer months last year as a laborer with game fish and parks doing invasive species remediation primarily out of the mound. So I made $815.30 for my efforts, so.
Okay, and you were working for the state.
That's right. I was working for state game fish and parks. Yep, not as good on trust.
And I have to disclose, I know this is today is not dealing with any applications. This is just an ordinance. But I know we have anticipated an application and this application would involve land that butts up to my land. So I don't know at that point if an application comes in, if I'm able, if that's a conflict or not, so.
I think what's important is this is what's called a quasi legislative hearing, which has a lower bar for conflict interest declarations by state law. If and when we get a, a application from a solar farm to operate under this ordinance, at that time it would be a quasi judicial. And so there's a higher bar of for conflict of interest at that point. So just so everybody knows where we're at in terms of conflict of interest, any decisions we would make today or at a future time.
Okay. And we'll, would somebody like to move to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Some motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Some motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So now we've got time for visitors to be heard. This is a public comment session. The public hearing will be at nine twenty or thereabouts. And so if you're not specifically on the agenda in any way, then you would just like to be heard, this is, this is your time.
And if I mean likewise, that would, if you're going to comment on an agenda item, then you would do that at a later point. This would be for something that isn't, any comments not related to anything.
All right, then we will go on to Lauren Hollenbach. You've got your quarterly report. Thank you.
Where do you want me to? Right up there, right up here.
Okay.
Um, I just have my quarterly report for you guys today. I think you guys all have the packet on your laptop. So since the last time that I was here, October, November is pretty busy with rolling over our new four H year. A lot of promotion and recruiting events happened in October with four each week and back to school and that kind of stuff. And then November was getting ready for our recognition event where we gave out all of our awards and items from the previous year. And now December and January, we have had a couple of workshops going on, but it's mostly now planning for the next year. So I've got a lot of meetings, workshops and activities and stuff that we're planning for that are coming up. And I also, two things I wanted to bring your attention to the applicator testing for the state. They changed the requirements this year. It's not just for commercial applicators. Private applicators can now come in and do a test, and so we are expecting those calls and visits to our office to go up. So Raven will probably be much busier fracturing those. And then this is from last year, so 2022 to 2023, because our four H year runs from October through September. So this impact snapshot where I've highlighted four of our four programs in these different categories that I wanted to highlight for the years. And hopefully you guys got a chance to read about some of the cool things that our four H kids are doing in the county. And that is pretty much all I have for you guys this month.
Me.
Thanks, Lauren.
You're welcome.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's good, good work you're doing there. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I was especially impressed by the percentage of kids in the county who actually participate.
Yeah.
Incredible.
Yeah. A really good set of kids and volunteers and everything at the moment, so it's good. Yep, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Next on the agenda is, let's see, highway superintendent.
Morning.
We got a.
Well, it's that time of the year where we gotta pick our bridge inspectors. And I guess I didn't highlight on your copy, but I'd recommend we go with Altig. There's ones that they did their bridge inspections last year, so.
And they're on the state list.
Yes.
They're on the state list.
Move to approve resolution 2024 dash oh six, bridge inspection programs with giving, hiring Altig engineering to be the word.
So there's a motion to approve resolution 2024 initial six. Here's a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we do have that right of way application form that you've developed and worked with Michael and the state attorney and Kerry. You know, they're doing that.
Yeah, so how do you feel about it? How were we saying you guys think it needs to?
Yeah, it looks, looks good.
Like it addressed all the things that we discussed.
Yep.
And on two pages.
Yep.
Kerry got it. She makes it into two pages.
So.
Two pages without leaving out any of the important parts.
Yeah, and I'm, I, it doesn't sound like we need a, a vote on this. I think it's just an administrative application detail.
If that's okay with you, we can have Kerry put it up on the website.
Looks good. Thank you.
The only other thing I have is they started surveying and wrote boring out here by, or farmers. By those who out help them now, Altig, well, they're this week, so we'll have some results here pretty soon what we need to do there.
Great.
Other than that, anything for me?
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And let's see, Sheriff Andy Howe. He's got the mini haha county juvenile detention.
We have two contracts. One is the JDC per diem contract. They gave us a heads up last summer about this culture call that I don't have the per diem rates in my head, but they're, they, in the contract. Thankfully, there's a much more favorable rate for, you know, other than the secure detention and, and most of our, our holes are there, so that's a good thing. And then there's also a contract, Union County, it's just a renewal of last year's contract at the same rate, so I recommend you approve both of those.
Yeah, so the, the rates are 458, $458.48 per day for JDC. And then Lutheran Social Services Shelter Care is 289.20. So I would need an authorization from the commission to sign the agreement.
Would have to let you sign.
Second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second, discussion?
Think all the, the only thing changed the, is the rates neither one and really no small print changes were there.
Looks good.
I was, I was a little surprised as I was reading carefully through it to see that they could. So, so that the, the JDC had the right to terminate a placement based on several criteria that seemed to be the reasons why anybody would ever be in there. So it was like psychotic behavior or excessive aggression towards staff members. And so I, I just, it left me wondering, I would think this would be at $458 probably our last, last resort placing someone there. And then I was wondering what, in, in what. If they were to protect someone, we would find ourselves looking at other facilities that might take them or getting together with state attorney in the court to find out what other opportunities there might be. And thankfully, many hot counties, they're professionally managed, they're, they're, they, they can deal with it, but they do reserve that right. Yeah. We deal with that with adult confinement. We have problem children inmates that nobody will take. You see that somebody. Think that they maybe have a higher rate and take them at a higher rate, but they'll, they'll just turn us away. And sometimes it's kind of tough to find placement for people that are demanding of staff resources and things like that. The, the, I don't, I don't really think that'll be a problem for us. They're, they're generally regarded about that. Yeah, I figured we discussed it and it had been. If I was them, I'd probably put that in there too.
Yeah, so would we like to take these agreements separately? We need the motion.
Uncomfortable voting on all together.
Both together.
Well, they made the motion, so. I made the motion. It's okay, both together.
Okay, so we'll consider both contracts. There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries and thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So. Um, all right. So the next item on the agenda is the public hearing. We've got a few more minutes, like five more minutes. And so maybe what we can do is move ahead and do vouchers before the public hearing. So everybody had a chance to look at the vouchers.
Yes, move to approve. I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve in a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, he's approved. He seconded.
I seconded, yep.
On that Yankton County Purple Loose Drive thing on page three, that, is that something that we pay them? I thought it was the other way around that we were receiving money for that stuff.
Rod's not still here. I was gonna ask him. I think it's both. In other words, I, I, I think we've got a multi-county contract.
There's four account, I think four counties involved.
And then they, I think they do some of the work and we.
We're reimbursing them for part of the grant money, though. Is that what it is? We give the grant. Right, and then we cost share it back with the other counties that participated.
I think that's correct, and I was just gonna say any of these bills go through Dennis and Rod before they even get to my office, so.
Just checking.
Yeah.
It was one of those where I thought we'd be receiving money from them, not, not giving them money.
Okay.
Um, other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, vouchers are approved. And maybe we should just, I think there may be some discussion on the raise grant, so maybe we can. And I think the rest of the items on the agenda will require extended discussion, so maybe we'll just wait the three minutes, less than three minutes and then start. I see. If you have a handout, you can hand them out the week. Nice.
Awesome.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask for a new one, cause I noticed mine was like.
That's a case, if it's Agar's commercial. Yeah, the state used that up to the counties to determine whether it didn't change. You did, you left it in the legs, so. All right. Oh, there's left. Which is how we want tax. Necessarily get taxed. We didn't have an option to not actually tax. Okay, but we wouldn't have to revise. Nope. Nope, wait. We'd be, we'd be leaving some money on the table. Not refreshing. My license doesn't have to sell commercial.
I see.
So. Sheriff. Yeah, they like those businesses that are. I still. Very strong. Although they're.
So did you just get back to a little more? Yeah. And it's just. Are we all set? All right, so we're opening the public hearing on utility scale, solar energy conversion. And, and this would create an ordinance to allow large solar farms in the county. And the text has been published and it's been up on the website and so on for several weeks. And we're glad to see you all here. And so I think probably the best way to proceed is anybody who'd like to speak. Yeah.
Before we get into the ordinance, we gotta, I'll keep thinking on the ordinance first.
Okay.
So after we did the ordinance with planning board, the McCook County and legislature have been looking at this issue. And potentially there's a bill in the legislature to require these to be in zone commercial districts. Right. Nobody else. Drew Littlebutter for. There is a bill in the state that could potentially, and coming out of McCook County, that could potentially require these projects to be in zoned commercial districts. None of the other states in South Dakota that I lifted the ordinance from that I copy and paste it from are doing that. They're all leaving it in an egg. C cog recommends leaving it in an egg. You would make a whole mess for the whole state if they required the zoning and the tax to match up. Cause zoning and taxes, two completely different things. However. The commercial tax component does come up and that's why we have Linnea here to talk about it.
All right, so I'm, you'll have to forgive me, I'm gonna kind of try to stick to my notes a little bit. There's kind of, our office field's a lot of questions regarding taxation and assessment. Occasionally zoning, we don't do zoning and we do not collect taxes. Our office is entirely in charge of the assessment, which kind of. Our office is entirely in charge of the assessment, which kind of does affect the taxation on the backend, but we kind of start at the beginning. So I wanted to cover why zoning, assessment and taxation are different issues. Our office handles assessment and classification of real property, which is the land and any permanent improvements to it. State law outlines for us whether something is valued at fair market value or valued using the productivity method. The productivity method is an income-based method, and it only applies to agricultural land. In determining if a property can be classified as agricultural for taxation or assessment, the land's principal use must be devoted to an agricultural pursuit. The state law is very clear about this, and I'm just going to read what those agricultural pursuits are. For tax purposes, land is agricultural land if the land's principal use is devoted to the raising and harvesting of crops or timber or fruit trees. The rearing, feeding and management of farm livestock, poultry, fish or nursery stock. The production of bees and apiary products or horticultural, all intended for profit. Agricultural land also includes woodland, wasteland and pasture land, but only if the land is held and operated in conjunction with agricultural land and is under the same ownership. For purposes of this section, the term principal use means the primary use to which the land is devoted. Um I have copies of this law. I gave you copies of this law, but it's S D C L ten dash six dash one twelve. Once a property's principal use is defined, there are further requirements that it makes at least two thousand five hundred dollars a year in income in three of the previous five years or has a minimum of twenty acres. Um I have copies of a Department of Revenue resource. It's a flow chart that shows once you qualify for that agricultural pursuit, what are the other requirements to be classified as ag? Um I also, and those are stapled with the codified law. I'll leave them over on the counter if anyone wanted a copy of that. All other properties in South Dakota, including commercial, residential and agricultural buildings, are valued on a fair market value system. So that's assessment. When it comes to taxation, the mill levies that translate this assessed value into taxes are the same across the board except for in the school general fund levy. These are tiered. Ag is the lowest, then it's owner occupied, and then all other real property. So I have another Department of Revenue resource I'll leave on the counter over there as well called Property Tax one O one. It covers that um mill levy change. But overall, your zoning of this property will not affect our assessment. Our assessment is very clearly laid out in law. What we can and cannot assess is agricultural. It has to have one of those agricultural pursuits before the land can be considered ag, even if it's zoned agricultural. So I hope that clears up the assessment. Taxation and zoning are tied together, but not really. So any questions on any of that from anyone?
I had one question. And so is this something that has been resolved somewhat recently? I feel like I had been at a meeting uh maybe in the fall, talking to someone from the Department of Revenue, and it sounded at that point like the Department of Revenue hadn't hadn't made a decision on this, and we're we're leaving that uh a classification up up to the counties at that point. That would have been like September of last year, or is this? I mean, this seems very clear, so I I was a little surprised as I'm thinking back to that conversation, but.
The last time the ag pursuit law was modified was in twenty twenty one, and I believe that's when they added timber as a ag pursuit. But as far as I know, ag taxation assessment has been very clear. It has to follow one of these pursuits. Is that what you're asking?
The the question, so I've been, I kind of pulled someone aside from the Department of Revenue after they gave a talk, and I was I was very curious, expecting solar development to come to the county and trying to understand the tax structure that it'd be under. Um and so I was, I got to the nameplate capacity and the generator capacity and the different income streams and how those come up, but I was wondering about the ground underneath it and whether that was, whether uh my main question at that point was, are these other income streams in lieu of property taxes on the ground underneath it? But you know, that was clearly no, and but but one thing that she brought up was that it there was some indecision, it sounded like at that point about whether um counties would be allowed to remain agri- remain an agricultural classification for the ground under it. Maybe if they if they had some sheep there or something like that, if there'd be ways that um that they would be allowed to, but.
I think the state law is pretty clear. They would have to have at least twenty five hundred dollars of income from an agricultural pursuit. One of these, in in addition to solar, I mean, I'm not saying that the solar and they can't coincide. Um that's something our office would go out and verify every year as of November first, whether that agricultural pursuit is existing on that ground before we can consider the productivity method. And part of that is productivity is an income-based method, so that's why they require that income from an agricultural pursuit, because it um does significantly affect the valuation.
And my understanding of that productivity formula is that it's primarily based on how good is this soil type for growing corn and soybeans, which you wouldn't be able to do if you've got a bunch of solar panels up there, so.
Yeah.
Um and then, you know, they talk about primary use at the very top line here. So if the vast majority of your income is derived from a lease for a solar uh development cited on your property and a small twenty five hundred dollars comes from some sheep, um it seems hard to argue that that would be a a primary use. Is that what your office would?
Yes, and that's where I'm saying every year we'd go verify that November first, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah.
Bill, uh Drew, what do we know about the bill and in the legislature then? Do you have a bill number?
I don't have a bill number for it yet. C pub didn't when I talked to him. Uh he and Sean hadn't even heard it when uh when I brought it up to him. Again, it's doubtful it would pass because it would change a all the other solar projects currently are in ag, so everybody else would have to change. And it would screw up, trying to give me zoning and taxes lineup would screw all kinds of things up across the state.
Yeah.
The only reason we bring it up is if the board feels like it needs to have that zoning, that commercial zoning classification, there's a workaround for it. We create a set uh one idea to create a another commercial zoning district for projects like this, this and like local substations and cell phone towers, things like that. But it'd take another three, four months to go through that process, so I don't know. I don't think the board would want to do that, but it's something we could do. It's something we may have to do if that law changes.
Yeah, there are collateral laws that uh are proposed that never
Yeah.
never make it out of the committee, and it sounds like one that would have such massive impact um on so many projects.
And if we do change, we're gonna have to change with everybody else, who will be will be part of the path then. I don't I don't recommend we go outside of that yet.
Yeah, and it it seems to me that the ordinance we have in front of us is the ordinance we're having a public hearing on. And um you know, I if we can, we can do some research. What happens at the end of this public hearing is that the commissioners vote uh whether to bring uh to whether to have a second reading of the ordinance. Um and so, you know, moving it to a second reading or setting it back for amendment would be the, you know, the the two choices we we would have at the end of this hearing, so. So you're here and we're glad you're here and we'd like we'd like to hear.
I've got one question.
Yeah.
On this under proposed ordinance here, does it change anything? We've got a setback in your hundred twenty five feet from Spirit Mound. Reference that email you sent yesterday from the state, does that change?
Not yet. Yeah, it it seemed to be that the 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 letter from the state was the one where they were talking about the historic preservation.
Yes.
And so I think that my understanding is they if if something was to be cited within a mile of Spirit Mound, there's a state agency that would need to review those plans and issue comment, or could they approve or deny them? I'm not sure if how much power they would have.
They could they could give a recommendation, and then the governor would have to apparently approve or deny that representation.
But but it seemed in that letter it allowed us to set the setbacks where we want.
Yeah.
Yeah, the setbacks, all the setbacks been before change, that's.
And and we we do have a um uh representative here from the Clay County Historic Preservation Commission, which is a certified local government. And um you know, who's spent some time looking into this, um so.
Well, thank you for having me uh come here. Uh my name is Evelyn Swanger. And I've been involved with the Clay County Historic Preservation for many years. Uh I am a representative of the council, the commission. Uh and what you're talking about as far as the ability of this o- organization to review uh anything that impacts a historical site is accurate. It's known as the eleven point one review. And uh we've done this already for the National Music Museum in the past, where uh they presented, this is a number of years ago, a plan for in addition to the National Music Museum, that because it conflicted with the the architecture of the Carnegie Building as well as impacted the university historic district uh was denied. Uh and then the second uh version of that was presented and was approved. So we do have the power to review uh anything that impacts uh a site that's on the national register. And Spirit Mound, as you know, is on the national register. It was put on the national register in nineteen seventy four. And the nomination was written by um uh uh Lloyd Moses, uh who was then part of the Clay County Historical Society. This was before the Clay County Historical Preservation Commission existed. And uh starting in nineteen in in twenty uh two thousand one, there was a a push to uh restore the uh land that Spirit Mound sits on uh to become uh like Lewis and Clark might have seen it. I mean, we're we're obviously not gonna put it back exactly the same. Uh and it was a concerted effort by a number of different organizations, and funding came from federal, state, local governments. There were donations from individuals, from the Spirit uh Mound Trust. So it was considered very uh important to do this. And eventually, the South Dakota Games Farm and Fish and Parks took over the land. And it's also uh under the um uh Missouri recreational area. So it's it it was deemed very important. If you look at it historically, Spirit Mound, when Lewis and Clark wrote about it in their journal uh in August twenty fifth of eighteen oh four, uh they described an amazing view that they saw. They were cautioned by the Native Americans that there were eighteen inch tall, big-headed devils that with sharp arrows that were gonna get them if they went up there. They went up anyway. And I can say that the very first time that I went up to Spirit Mound before it became a park, I went through a smudging ceremony. So the significance of Spirit Mound is historic, cultural and um also uh ecological and geological. Um it is an important place also for tourism. Uh about twenty five thousand people visit that, and then they're going to go to other parts of Clay County and Vermillion. So we have to think about it that way. So to finish, since I only have thirty seconds left, uh is that uh the Clay County Historic Preservation Commission uh agrees with the limits that uh were from the National Park Service for setbacks as well as the Spirit Mound Trusts. We feel that this is not just a park. This is a historical uh site uh that uh that has cultural, ecological uh significance uh both to the county, the state and the nation.
Thank you. Well, we can do it. I'm happy to. So we didn't get our act together to get them in time to you electronically, so here are paper copies of the letter. And if if that image could be pulled up, that would be wonderful. Uh but you all have time. Now put these extra copies that I have back there here in a minute. So I'm Megan Darko. Um I'm a resident of Clay County at two one one eight Old Bridge Road. Um I'm speaking on behalf of um Spirit Mound Trust. So as president uh of Spirit Mound Trust Board of Directors, I'm commenting today on the line item in the proposed solar ordinance that you're considering, which designates a specific setback for Spirit Mound of a hundred and twenty five feet. As you know, we formally asked the Planning and Zoning Commission to protect Spirit Mound and its view shed with a two-mile setback. We believe that the currently proposed setback of a hundred and twenty five feet, which is roughly the width of a public road, um is insufficient. So as you heard from Evelyn, um let me remind folks that it's the only state park in Clay County. It is listed on the National Register of Historic Sites. It is part of the national park system as a spur on the Lewis and Clark National Historic Trail. And every year, Spirit Mound gets tens of thousands of visitors, and it's the view of Spirit Mound that are heavily promoted in the media and tourism information. The interpretive theme and visual values could be reduced by significant commercial development placed too closely to the three hundred and twenty acre uh resource that we are working to preserve. So having mentioned commercial development, the thing I'd like to say, we said before, I'd like to say again, certainly Spirit Mound Trust is not opposed to solar energy, um and we support alternative energy and the benefits associated with it. Our interest, as we said in our last letter, lies in quote reasonably protecting the nearby setting and viewscape of Spirit Mound. We recognize that had a solar ordinance been in place before any recent developer offered signed cash lease agreements um for up to two thousand acres in Clay County, this issue might not have been divisive. Um but since here we are, and so in reviewing uh local activities, um we believe that Clay County is well ahead of others in making efforts to establish good zoning, and we appreciate that. So in the spirit of reaching a more balanced solution for your consideration today, we, Spirit Mound Trust, would like to modify our setback ask so that it mirrors the position of the National Park Service and as you just heard, uh the Clay County Historic Preservation Commission um to a request of one mile. So we believe this request is reasonable, given all the local, regional and national significance of the mound, and we appreciate your willingness to give our request a fair consideration. Thank you. Thank you. Would like to speak next? Please. And tell us your name.
Name's Richard Nissen. I'm in the bottom part of the watershed that the solar panels are gonna be in. And I am quite concerned about the drainage. I've got four dams that were built in two thousand nine, designed by the N R C S to handle the water that comes through this watershed. Uh there's all kinds of tile lines and everything out there. And when they put these solar panels in, they put anchors. Those anchors could break the tile lines, prevent the water from going underground, come up on top. And before all this was done, the water washed out roads and everything else. So the ordinance should read that they have to maintain water drainage. That's already there, because that's what my farm was designed for that. If they do any damage to these dams, there are six hundred acres of ground below those dams that are being protected. If they do any damage to these dams, there are six hundred acres of ground below those dams that are being protected. So if you want to make any changes, I think you better make sure the water drainage is still there.
Thank you. That's helpful. Who's next? Please.
Hi, Christian, I'm a resident out near the park, or not near the park, but I'm a landowner, near the park out there. And I have land that's, uh, possibly going to be developed, you know, in the proposed solar farm. Uh, and I have a couple of letters I'd like to submit from, uh, landowners that couldn't make it today. Ask me to give this to you. I'm sorry I don't have copies, but they're, uh, I'll let you, you guys can read them and pass them on. They're short letters. They support the uh, solar ordinance as it's written. We think it's a good, workable ordinance, so it'll allow for reasonable development. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. And we'll, um, give those to Kerry when we're done, our auditor, so that they get included in the minute. We'll, we'll, uh, we'll provide these for the auditor who keeps
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Yeah, please.
My name is Bill Ranny, and I live close to Spirit Mound. And my objection is to the one hundred and twenty-five foot setback from a residence. And this seems incredibly small, considering that if you live in Vermillion, nobody would have a industrial development right outside your back door. I was, I was hoping to see five hundred feet from any residence. And correct me if I'm wrong, if somebody had a farm and they wanted that solar panel farm right outside their farm, they could request a variance. So if it was made five hundred feet, somebody wanted that solar panel farm, one hundred and twenty-five feet from their kitchen. And I've, uh, I've seen where this discussion is pretty common all across the country. And it's the same argument where you've got rural properties plus suburban. A mix. And the same argument is, is a lot of these people are, are trying to maintain a rural setting, a rural feeling. And the same argument is occurring where they're talking a hundred and some feet versus five hundred to a thousand feet from, from an individual residence. And it's going to make a big difference whether you're a farm or you're just a, a house out there in the country. And I'm assuming that it will be the more, uh, housing development. I also am a retired archaeologist. And so I do, I support the one mile setback from Spirit Mound. I know that if, for instance, the solar farm or anything that has been federal undertaking is going to require a review. And it's going to require Native American consultation also for that project. In order to keep things moving forward smoothly, that a one-mile setback from Spirit Mound could prevent a lot of problems in the future. And, um, I would also suggest that any development one mile of the mound is going to be an adverse effect. Um, astronomy club goes out there, but there's light pollution at night to consider. There's a lot of larger issues that doesn't feel like they're being considered. And this solar ordinance kind of opens it, if that small minimum, uh, setback is kept. It's going to open the door to a lot of problems, I think.
All right. Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Please.
Uh, my name is Danny Johnson. I live, uh, kind of right on the S curve on Highway nineteen. So I'm kind of just north of where all this project is going on or whatever. And I guess my big concern, like, uh, Richard Nissen said, is drainage. Um, we farm quite a bit of ground up there, and it's i- if you look at the old plat books that are from way back when it was called cabbage flats. Yeah, I mean, it was lower ground or whatever, and, um, they made a lot of improvements to get it drained. And, um, there's a lot of clay tile that's buried under the ground. I can't imagine back in the day when they dug that down six feet, four feet, whatever, and put it in one foot at a time. What kind of job or what kind of work that was, but it'd be, uh, terrible to get that broken up. And then it, you know, all of a sudden, all that backs up, and you might have thousands of acres that are underwater because it just has to get out of there. And that's one of the reasons that the dams were built, to, to be able to hold it. And we have a dam on our farm also that's in our pasture that catches, you know, runoff or whatever. We try and maintain the water the best that we can and, and keep it from causing problems. So I guess that'd be my main concern, because I can't imagine if they're going to drill holes for posts to put these things up, they're going to hit it. I mean, there's just no way to not, to miss it. And I mean, there's a lot of probably clay tile out there. But we really don't know, you know, back in the day, it was probably never mapped or keeping, kept track of. So I don't think there's any way to really know where a lot of it is, but yet it keeps working. And, um, and I just think we, we need to maintain it and keep it working.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Please.
My name is Carson. I live at two two one East Main Street. And, um, I like solar. I think it should be a good thing, but, um, I'm a little worried if, uh, I, I worked a lot of industrial projects throughout America. I do automation and industrial supply. And one thing that I do notice is things get built up, and then after ten years, they don't work anymore, and they get, it'll get tearing down. And I was hoping that there's adequate, um, writing in the, in everything that if it doesn't work, or if this company goes bankrupt, are we left with a big solar graveyard? Are we left with something out there that's right next to Spirit Mound? It doesn't look good. Um, also, it could be an environmental problem. These aren't made of exactly environmentally friendly materials. And, uh, just something to think about, that that is inside whatever, whatever you're writing.
Okay, thank you. And there's a, there is a section of the ordinance, just, you know, for information's sake, about decommissioning that actually requires them to, um, retain a bond. Um, that would, in the event that they defaulted, pay, pay for decommissioning. And then includes restoration of soil and so on. So, and that's a really good point. Who else would like to speak?
Hi, Harry Freeman, also resident of Clay County, a little bit, uh, north and west of, uh, the proposed solar farm. Uh, mainly just want to reiterate what has been said a number of times, that I think one of the main concerns I would have would be the light pollution. And, uh, it isn't, and I'm wondering, can I ask you a question? Is there an understanding of how much lighting is required for a farm of this size? And, and is there, uh, is there some discretion in terms of how much lighting is needed or required?
Yeah, that's a really interesting question, and somebody else asked me that, um, uh, this past week. And, um, there is, um, correct me if I'm wrong, there's nothing in the ordinance now.
We don't have a light pollution ordinance, I believe.
Yeah, so, so feel free to talk about what your
Right. So, I mean, for the same concerns, certainly for visitors to the park and being able to have a, a vision of the night sky. Clearly work for the astronomy club, but I also wonder about native species that are returning to the area. Those that has, I mean, I think, you know, any ecologists could certainly speak better to this, but if there are animals that would be disrupted in terms of normal light cycles that, that might disrupt the habitat in certain ways. Uh, I think there's maybe a number of things to consider for both, uh, human creatures and our other creatures in terms of light in the area.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions or concerns? Please.
Uh, I'm Dave Hertz. I live at three one three three two Blue Road. I'm just a mile from that Spirit Mound on the corner of three thirteen there. But, uh, I'm in favor of the one-mile ordinance. That way, if you get up there at Spirit Mound, you can look a mile. Um, and another thing is where I see they have an anti-glare, um, study or whatever. But, you know, if they do do something, maybe you could have them plant trees around the outside of, uh, of that. Because if you get, you know, some thirty-foot tall trees, and you have it on a nice flat piece of ground. It, it'd be pretty hard to see what's behind there, so that's
Thank you.
Take on it.
Testimony?
Uh, hi, I just have, uh, one question on, um, the solar energy. I love this whole solar energy. It's fantastic project. It's going to help this community. It's, it's a, a good way of getting more energy to this area. I have one question on that. There's several solar farms that are in the state of Minnesota. Um, and in certain areas of Minnesota where they always get rainfall. Some of those guys have put up their quarters and, uh, three hundred and twenty acres, four hundred and eighty acres. There is a less amount of rainfall that takes place there because of the refraction that's coming in place. It doesn't set in clouds as easily because of the sunlight coming down. What I'm asking that committee to do is to see if there's any information out there on that. The state of Minnesota is known for a very wet area. When you bring it into South Dakota, we have less rainfall, um, than they do. So, uh, my question is, you know, you have a lot of, uh, solar energy in Texas, down south, where it's very arid climate. And you'll have sunlight all the time. And so they don't have data that, that shows has it been less rainfall in a certain area? But in the state of Minnesota, there are areas where producers have said several times that uh, rainfall has depleted, um, over these big solar farms. Consider something to research. I don't know if the data is out there.
All right. Thank you. Other comments or questions or, yes, please?
Wayne Johnson, uh, we farm up in the Pleasant Valley area, which is off of the S curve. And, uh, drainage is a big issue in our area. As, uh, you know, being said, there were once the cabbage flats. And we not only have clay tiles that run through ground and head south towards the Vermillion River. But in nineteen sixty-seven, with the ASCS, my dad put in above-ground ditches on about three hundred and twenty acres. That if the rain is too heavy, some of that water flows on top of the ground. And some of the areas that are proposed for this, uh, solar project, if they change the elevation of the ground to the south of us. It will end up holding the water back on our ground and flooding out our crops or making it so we can't, uh, get crops planted in the spring. If it gets to be too wet. So drainage is the number one concern. We also live out there, just a mile north of Spirit Mound. And my mother lives two miles north of, of our place. And if there gets to be big solar farms around our area, and we're, our acreages are surrounded by these solar farms, what is that going to do to our value of our property? You know, I can't see that it's going to improve it if somebody comes to look at your place, if you want to sell it. And you've got solar panels a hundred and twenty-five feet from your doorstep. That doesn't seem like a very far setback for people who have acreages out there, but do not own the land around it and cannot prevent or do anything about it. It's going to be a hardship for them if they decide they want to move or sell or anything else. You can imagine if you had your property out there, you lived in town, and somebody was going to develop something like this across the street from you. You know, it probably wouldn't be something that you'd be so eager to have, so. But that's my input on it. I think the setbacks need to be further around the residents too, not just the Spirit Mound.
Thank you.
Yep.
Helpful. Other comments?
Uh, wait, just a quick question, actually, uh, probably goes to the weed supervisor in Clay County as well. But I'm just curious if there's part of this ordinance that talks about noxious weed control. As far as, uh, perennial weeds, noxious weeds that are, that are required to be controlled or whatever. Because this could be a significant amount of acres that would be, I doubt that mechanical weed control outside of ma- maybe aerial application can be done. So anyway, I guess I urge you to look into that. I mean, we work pretty hard as landlords to try to keep our noxious weeds under control. In fact, it's a, uh, statute, actually, so.
But I was just thinking, Drew, that, that would be covered elsewhere in the ordinance. Is that correct?
Or under the, the weed board, right, things like that.
So I don't believe it's addressed here, but I think that the reason for not addressing it, if I'm understanding correctly, is that it, if there's language that already would prevent it elsewhere in order. So. Or, sorry, not ordinance.
What's that, Carl?
Clyde is curious, who'd be accountable for the, say, there was a weed issue or whatever, who'd be the contact? Not, I mean, for you to contact since you're taking responsibility.
So right now Dennis is our weed supervisor.
Right.
He would contact the landowner.
Oh, the landowner.
Still the landowner.
Okay.
Okay. They're still responsible for, now, how they handle that, that's up to them.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, we've talked about it quite a bit during planning and zoning.
Yeah.
Actually, what sort of vegetation will be beneficial underneath solar, solar panels? And noxious weed control is one of the main concerns there. So, you know, we, we talked about it during a couple of meetings earlier on. And, uh, during the conditional use permit, you know, we, we likely uh, require them to tell us what sort of plating they would put on the seating.
Other comments? No other speakers? All right. Well, then I will close the public hearing. And, um, uh, we will move on to discussion of the commissioners.
We have a motion and a second on this prior to the discussion. Oh, should we do that?
We could. We can, we can do it. Uh, you know, the Roberts Rule's way is to have a motion, uh, second, and then discussion. But I know that in this commission, we've done things more informally, so I'm, I'm, I'm open to doing it either way.
I think it's best to make a motion, don't you?
Well, it's just going to be a motion to move it to the second reading.
Yeah, that's right.
Because only, it won't be formalized. I would move to advance this to the second reading.
There's a motion and a second to advance this to the second reading. Um, all those, oh, any discussion of advancing it?
I think, uh, I'd like to have a discussion. Yeah. So I mean that to open a discussion.
Okay.
I just have a question for, um, Michael or State's Attorney. Is there a conflict of interest for me, Mike?
From what I heard from you, Dave, I don't believe so, as, uh, we went through with, uh, as Dick Pendel laid out, the quasi-judicial uh, versus legislative area, I believe where you're at. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's because of land that you own that it butts the area?
My land that I own is butted up to a land that has been signed up with this.
Okay, so really, at the end of the day, it's, it's, from my reading of statute and, and case law, this has come up before. It's really up to you to decide whether or not you believe you have, uh, a conflict of interest. I believe It's really up to you to decide whether or not you believe you have uh, a conflict of interest. I believe, given, you know, there's no proprietary interest from the sounds of it, at least directly. Um, you know, I I'd allow you to make the decision ultimately. I think that's the proper way to do this. Uh, you just have to decide whether or not um, you believe that there's enough proprietary interest in this land um, that abuts it, that that makes you uncomfortable to the point where you feel like you need to accuse yourself.
And I and I would only, I would like to add to that if I may, um, that um, uh, you know, there's a big difference between what we're doing today and a conditional use permit, which would in fact, it would in fact, I think constitute some public, you know, a kind of interest if it were abutting your property, but in terms of the ordinance.
But I just wanna be, make sure that it doesn't come back later.
No, because we're just talking about a general ordinance.
Yep, yep, that's, that's what I, when I know this has turned into a specific site, so.
I have a, a number of notes that I took, because I went through the ordinance. Some of them are just little grammar things. Um, I this is just me, but why isn't it USC S? Why not?
Keep them all in one spot for the definitions.
Okay, all right. I can accept that. Um, I do think that uh, utility scale solar energy conversion uh, on the first page, it should have an S instead of a C. Um, just a minor one, also in the
In the title.
That's right, in the title, sorry. Um, and then in that section, it'd be uh, C for private roads. I I looked like maybe just a typo, the permittee shall promptly repair private roads, heathens, or lanes damaged when moving equipment of when attaining access to the site. I think that should be or when attaining access to the site.
I have some more substantive questions, so.
Those are editorial errors.
Um, so in uh, G, glare. Uh, the the second, I think it's the second or third sentence, once installed, if the uh, uses creates glare onto neighboring properties or right-ofways, and the county determines that such glare may constitute a nuisance, the county will require a more detailed glare study prepared by a third-party consultant mutually acceptable to the county and the permittee to identify additional actions or screenings that may be required to substantially eliminate or block the glare from entering adjacent or nearby properties or public right-ofways. And my question there is, do we need to clarify at whose expense? Or is it implied in that language that it's at our expense, or is it implied that it is at the landowner's expense?
Yeah, that's unclear.
Yeah, does the board wanna take on the cost of that or wanna put that on the landowner or the system owner?
And do we want to in in following sections, we have some pretty strict limits on how often noise testing can be required. Um, do we want to have any limits on that? I mean, I I could imagine a situation where if in here, it simply says anytime they get a glare complaint, they need to pay for a engineer to come out there and do a study that probably costs at least a thousand dollars, you know, is that a situation where we could open, where they could be concerned? We don't wanna psych here because we heard you guys had a public meeting, there were a hundred people there, and if every one of those peoples makes us do a thousand dollar, you know, study, that's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars and there's no limits on it. Is is that someplace where we want to say? Um, you know, such study would not be required more than once a year, or you know, maximum or or something. I don't, I don't know. I'm just questioning that.
Noise down once a year.
Uh, I, that was just off the top of my head. I just, I was wondering if that was something that had been discussed at all at planning and zoning level.
No, I never, but it's a good idea. Um, and then add the one year uh, per test to the glare.
Yeah, that's, that's a good one. Okay, um, and then in the very next section, noise each, um, the noise level of uses shall not exceed fifty-five decibels, average eight-weighted sound pressure. And there's some clear uh, clear stuff in there, but the rest of that sentence says effects at existing occupied buildings. So my reading of that is that the only places where you could, someone could complain about the sound would be at a existing residence. So were you standing on top of Spirit mound and there's an annoying problem that sounds like it's a hundred decibels, this ordinance would not allow you to request that that be tested?
Uh, from the top of Spirit mound, uh.
Or would we wanna just open it up and instead of saying it is existing occupied buildings or at a location outside of the property where the uses is cited or something like that?
That's a little too broad.
So sort of in between there?
Outside of the setback.
Outside of the setback distances?
What I'm thinking is that you could end with that second deal where it could be anywhere outside of the, outside of the you can end up with a nuisance gadfly that just doesn't like the solar farm. Uh, standing at some section corner that's nearby and saying, well, I hear this. I'm gonna make you do a noise study. There must be some little ground here.
Well, if it ends up in court, you're gonna have to have a residence.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it will hold water. Otherwise, you wouldn't have the grounds.
All right, I think the chances of having something that would be objectionable. They on the top of Spirit mound are pretty small.
I I would expect that to be too as well.
I think the risk is small.
Yeah, I would expect that as well too. But I haven't, I haven't stood right next to a solar installation of a large solar installation, so I don't know.
Solar panels themselves don't make any noise. From what I've been told, I'm not an expert on solar, but the transformer buildings can make a home. Yeah, I.
Um, going back to uh, G on that glare. Uh, maybe just adding a sentence to the end that says the glare study to be funded by the permittee or owner or facility owner.
System managers.
Right.
Whatever language you have, yeah.
Yeah, we could actually just take the language from um, the noise. It it shall be the responsibility of the owner operator of the uses project to pay the costs associated with measuring.
Well, and we actually have that, you know, noise level testing shall not be repeated in a representative area during any five-year period. Uh, unless operational or maintenance changes result in a reasonable assumptionation of higher noise levels. We could just use the language in the glare section as well.
I, that's a good idea.
Yeah, and I, I think back in uh, in H under noise two, uh, in line four, uh, it says that the L ninety measurement should be used and have a measurement period of no less than ten minutes unless otherwise specified by the Board of Adjustment. I would, uh, unless, unless he uh, vigorously proposed that, I'd put that responsibility back on the zoning administrator. So there's no need to take that to a motion of the board. You, you should have that power, I think.
Yeah, it's kind of an administrative.
Yeah.
That will save an enormous amount of time too.
Yes.
So under I, let's see, under J, decommissioning. Uh, J four lowercase two. So J four lowercase, J four, uh, decommissioning plan, prior to approval of a COP for a uses facility, the facility owner or operator must file the following documents with the zoning administrator. Lowercase, you know, one, lowercase number, form number one, the estimated decommissioning cost, semicolon, uses and for restoring each road haul in current dollars at the time of the application for the proposed facility. So it seemed to me that there might be some words missing there. The grammar just, I didn't understand that.
Yeah, I uh, I actually in my uh, thoughts that I I was gonna just X out uses and and then put uh, for restoring, that clears it up.
And tell me where you are, what paragraph you're at.
This is page four of the draft ordinance, or page five of the draft ordinance, very top. And this is J four two. Uses and would be struck through.
For restoring, okay.
Under subsection, I I strike the first two words.
Else, yeah, I'll leave you to that.
And then uh, the next uh, five, so J five, decommissioning requirements. Um, that, that section essentially says, to the extent possible, the site must be restored and reclaimed to the topography and topsoil quality, and then details that a little bit. As I read that, um, one question that I had, so one hope that I have, is that that these facilities will be cosited with agri-solar projects that could usually have a perennial grass, uh, grasses established. Uh, a facility could be at a location for thirty years, maybe it's near Spirit mound and we have some like more grassland that is profitable grassland. I mean, that, to me, that's a kind of a, a meeting of uh, of desirable things for the county. Um, and at the end of, in the decommissioning with this current language, uh, I I have a little bit of concern that this would require, were it, were it row crops previously, that it be restored, so tilled back to being uh, appropriate to immediately plant row crops. And so I just was hoping that maybe uh, something in there could you know, maybe it's just saying uh, to reclaim to the topography and topsoil quality, or at least the biography or 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 the topography and at least the topsoil quality that existed pre- previously, uh, or or something that would just ensure that there wasn't anything in our ordinance that would say that if you restored a prairie on this site for thirty years, uh, you'd have to till it up at the end to have it back in the same state it was previously. Or maybe I'm, you know, maybe I'm imagining a concern that that shouldn't really exist, but.
Yeah, you know, I I had a similar concern, um, related anyway, um, that you know, how do we know what the state of the soil was before? Um, you know, how, is there, I don't know that there's a, an answer to this, but um, you know, I'm I'm a little concerned about what that means, the the um, topsoil quality that existed just prior to and how, how we would know that. I mean, it would almost seem like it would be on the yeah, but but who would do the soil testing? Yeah, yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't really address soil, soil quality afterwards. And how that's established, and that is a force of concern.
And and the use afterwards, that would be up to the landowner at the time of de- decommissioning, in my opinion. I, I don't think we should be imposing requirements on how the guy's gonna use his land afterwards, if he wants to plant corn. Well, really, that should be his decision.
Yep.
And unencumbered by us.
Yeah, and I guess the, 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 you know, this is a landowner protection question I have. Um, so a solar farm could um, presumably say, well, you know, it's just like it was before, but might not be.
So maybe we simply leave, do we, do we say that the, the landowner must sign off that it has been restored to the, to the previous to an appropriate degree of topsoil health and and appropriate topography, or is that something we would leave to the following landowner to determine if it's appropriate to their uses?
We, we address the, we address in the ordinance, uh, that in a conditional use permit, we, we ask, we, we ask or tell the owner uh, to tell us what type of forage or
Okay.
And uh, and type of uh, land use they're gonna have under it, what type of grasses that we're gonna plant, that sort of thing, we'd, we'd be able to sign off on that. And in my opinion, as long as they control the the weeds, noxious weeds underneath and and weeds that may not be declared noxious on the, on the, on the list too. To the greatest extent, we've got power to regulate those also, unless they sterilize the soil underneath the solar panels. Uh, for a significant part of the duration of the, of the project. Where all the project, that the soil's likely to be in better shape. Once, once they're done, then it uh, then before the before the project is done.
I'm just, I mean, I understand the, what they're gonna plant on there, while the solar farm is there.
Right.
But as far as putting it back to what it was, that's between the company and the landowner.
That's
I mean, that's, I don't know why we would even get involved in. Cause if it's in our ordinance, they're gonna expect us to sue the company.
That's why, that's why, that that's the reason for my comments four minutes ago.
Sounds good.
On that same place, there's a little bit of uh, of cleaning up the language, I think, too, that's necessary. Under subsection five, decommissioning requirements. Instead, read a little clunky for you guys too down here where it says de- decommissioning and site restoration, including signing appropriate hall agreements for the de- decommissioning process. And then right after that, it says dismantling and removing of all uses-related equipment, foundations, buildings, and ancillary equipment to a depth of forty-two inches. And I propose that we uh, put the verbiage, decommissioning shall include, at the beginning of that sentence. Decommissioning shall include dis- dismantling and removal of all uses-related equipment, blah, blah, blah. And then the next sentence. You okay with that, Drew?
Yep.
Then in the next sentence, the same thing, uh, put a uh, uh, add the verbiage, road decommissioning shall include. If they add that at the beginning of that sentence, so it would read, road decom- decommissioning shall include removal of surface road material and restoration of the roads and uses sites to substantially the same physical condition that existed immediately before the project construction. And I think that in part uh, addresses, uh, I think it was Mr. Johnson was worried about changing the topography of the, of the site uh, during construction. And that would, that verbiage would require them to put the topography back to what it was before the project started.
Yeah, but you got thirty years where But then they change it, well, they're not gonna be the same.
Right, they have to leave the topography the way it is.
Yeah.
Or not, not stop the drainage.
No, right. And that's, that too.
Drainage has gotta be put in this ordinance. I mean, it's gotta maintain what's there already or improve.
That, that's already in state law. That's already been rocked before.
Yeah, right. State law is really working good.
Well, it does, because we have to, uh, when, when uh, a proposal comes before us during the conditional use process, uh, we get to, we get to add anything like that that we want to on a site-by-site basis. There may be places where solar farm go up, uh, oh, say southwest of Beersford or something like that, where, where a solar farm, we might require them to put in a few uh, dams in order to uh, um, better control runoff and drainage and that sort of stuff. So at this level, I think we're better to leave it alone.
Well, we have to maintain what's there.
Yeah. How do they become aware?
If they change any of the tiles, they have to replace. Still the same drainage as was there.
Yeah.
And that's not thirty years later.
No, no, but drainage tiles, uh, it's, at least it's always been my standard practice when and I've got a lot of drainage tiles in my day. And to put them back, so if they're functionally the same, is when I found them.
That'll be in the ordinance.
Well, that would be, that would be a requirement on a CUP. So if you hear one of these is going in near your place out there and there's a conditional use permit hearing, then this is a great time to come down and and say you need to make sure that this is addressed.
Will you personally notify a guy?
See, see, these are, these are our rubs. Site-specific things should go in the conditional use permit, not necessarily in the ordinance.
Yeah.
But is it, I mean, this, this drainage thing? Do we have anything that addresses that? Because it's not just a site in this county. There's a number of places that have drainage issues. I mean, you're well aware of that. So, I mean, I don't exist in that doesn't cover drainage tiles, does it?
So are are you suggesting that in the same way as we have safety access, a glare section, a noise section, we should have a drainage section?
I I I think we should, because these guys that have spoke, they've lived this land for years and years. And I personally live in that area and drainage is a problem for me. So we could, they know their tiles, they know the land, they know their wet spots, they know how it drains. They've been there for thirty-plus years probably. So I think, and it's not just this site, I believe, it's, there's numerous areas in this county that has drainage issues, so I think. So I think just a general drainage thing does need to be listed in the ordinance that, you know, what, what happens if they do go through tile? Are they gonna, are they gonna fix it? Or are they going to retile? I mean, what's, who's going to be responsible for that?
Is that something that is like in the building permit too, like when they go out there, how are they made aware of what's under the ground so that they're keeping an eye out for it as they go?
And then, you know, like Dick said, it is addressed in the, in the CUP, you know, also, but I think it should be in the ordinance too that, that is addressed somehow.
Most of the, most of the verbiage we'd likely rely on to make those protections would make it harder for a landowner to, uh, or a group of landowners surrounding the area. Make it so that during construction that they make the drainage situation better. That's, that was part of my point earlier is that, uh, I, uh, if we get too, uh, tough on saying, hey, it's gotta, you can't mess up the topography or the drainage, you can't change it. If you say you can't change it, you can't change it for the better as well as for the, for worse. So I, that's why I'm thinking that leaving those types of decisions to the uh, conditional use permit and or the, the building permit stage, it's more site-specific, makes more sense. It's more likely to get where we want to be, where you want to be.
Just a quick question, um, have you discussed at all, uh, about the setbacks? Because there's been a lot of people who have.
I think we're not quite there yet, but we'll get to it.
Okay.
Jeffrey, you have other, other comments and then I'll give everyone.
Moving on from that one, I had just one more.
I just have, yeah, yeah. We could put it in the ordinance that way in case somebody misses it, because I've heard people complain that the notice for this meeting was in the small print in the back page of the paper, if they even get the paper. If you put it in the ordinance that they have to maintain surface and subsurface drainage that's already there, at least it's addressed because there's, like they've mentioned, there's tile out there we don't know about.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So if it's not mentioned.
Clay, it's easier to fix.
But if it's not mentioned in the, if it's not mentioned in the ordinance or nobody complains about the conditional use permit and it's not in there, we have no recourse.
Yeah, that's, just should have mentioned. Drainage should be mentioned.
I mean, if we wanted to improve it, we can put that in the conditional use permit.
Yeah.
But just so it's protected to begin with, it should be, you know, it should be at least maintained.
Okay. And you propose some verbiage, we'd have a separate section then that goes for drainage.
And we just.
Where should we put that, Drew?
I mean, that's what I'm thinking about.
Suggestions?
You agree with that, Drew?
Problem I have with it is how, let's say somebody hits one of these clay tiles. How are they supposed to, A, know they hit it right away and B, even know where it's at?
Well, they won't know right away, but eventually they will.
Yeah, eventually.
This at least gives us the opportunity to, they have to allow us, it has to be allowed to be, um, fixed. Yeah. Cause all of a sudden they're going to get a bunch of water on their surface, because it's going to blow up.
Let's say we didn't have this requirement in there and somebody found out their tile line had been damaged. The upstream property owner would still have to fix it no matter what.
Well, the upstream property owner would be fine, because it's going to be blown out on this.
Whoever, whoever owns the ground.
But, but they could just cap it. They don't have to fix it.
Yeah, they don't have drainage, yeah.
Yeah, they could just cap it. So this way, if we just say it has to be maintained, they're going to be able to figure out somewhere that it's not coming out here, it's going in here, who's in the middle?
Well, if we do this, we should have a, uh, reporting, a reporting requirement. If you hit a tile, you got to report it. And it's usually pretty obvious, you know, my experience having hit a few myself.
Yeah, if it's wet, it comes up fast or you can find the clay tile.
No, no, you, you find, you, you have this, you have this batch of PVC comes up with the trenchers, what happens.
Well, if you hit plastic.
Yeah, and if it's tile, you get this orange stuff that comes up.
Right.
And, uh, inside it's pretty, unless you're completely oblivious, it's pretty easy, especially these guys, guys are going to be doing, uh, it'll only be about two or three feet deep when they're burying their electrical lines, but the foundations, where they would get deep enough to, uh, hit a, hit a tile in, uh, in the back hole before you pour concrete. If you see little half, uh, half circles of orange pipe, it's, it's pretty obvious.
If they know anything about it.
Yeah.
Say that's a first of all.
That's why we should really have a reporting requirement, is then if, uh, required to report it and they don't and there's trouble down the line, then you've got, uh, uh, go, how this get hit, uh, go along, you, you, you trace it, find out where the problem is and go, hey, you, you owe us big bucks at this point for the repair. Not only going to that, it goes to crop damage too. Yeah. Yeah, it could flood you out or if you already got.
But that, that becomes a civil issue and that's what we don't handle.
Yeah, yeah.
But we need to address that. If we don't address it at all, it's even harder.
Something needs to be done.
Yeah, so.
Sure, because I know how much tile costs to put in, it's not cheap. We have a lot of dollars invested.
That's right.
So notification of.
I do have another question, that doesn't have anything to do with tile, it's not on the agenda, it's a little out of whack. All this, where all this energy is going, is it staying in South Dakota or is it being shipped off to California or where is it going?
Going into the grid, no idea.
Yeah, and that, that is the, um, that, that's under the purview of the federal energy, um, FERC, for Federal Energy Resource Commission, I believe. It's a federal commission. Every, uh, solar company that wants to build a solar farm has to apply first to FERC for permission to connect to the grid, um, and so.
It's not just every solar or wind, it's every energy, every energy provider.
Yeah, so.
There's some great suits out there on FERC, by the way.
Yeah, and, and so there's no local control on that, it's entirely within federal jurisdiction.
Well, I'm, I'm just curious where.
Yeah. Um, so, so it looks like there's some senses growing on creating a drainage section. Um, and who would, uh, if you hit a tile, who, who, who would they have to report, notify of that?
Zoning administrator.
Yeah.
And then is it up to the zoning administrator to, uh, tell the landowner or should zoning administrator and the landowner?
You lucky guy.
Let, let's walk this back, like we're dragging the county into a lot more of a process than I think we want to. Mike, feel free to jump in here any moment.
So who would you recommend, so who would you recommend that they notify?
The landowner. The landlords.
I, I think you both need to do it so it's documented. Because if, let's say Roger's the landowner and Dick's affected, Dick's going to come to us first. That way you at least know about it.
I'll go to the lawyer first.
Well, but I know who the lawyer's going to contact. The landlord needs to be notified too.
We'll, we'll take this back, plenty, don't even figure this out.
Okay, excellent.
All right, I had just one more then if we're moving on from that, um, and so this was down in the definitions. So, so basically by my reading of the ordinance, we've got utility scale and then you've got building mounted. And there's, and there's nothing in between. So if I took the same size panel I was going to put on my roof and I put it on a couple posts in the yard, that would then become a utility scale one that needed to follow all of these rules. And if I built a structure that looked exactly like a solar panel that was a sculpture in my yard, that's fine. If I built a carport that was the size and shape of a solar panel, that's fine. It's, it's just that it's generating electricity. So it just, it made me wonder, why not have like a nameplate capacity threshold for like large or small versus building mounted being specific to rule, it just seemed a little odd to me.
Look, like with drainage, I kind of kept, tried to keep this just focused on the utility scale systems when we're having the potential applications for building mounted or ones I get questions about all the time, do I need a building permit for that? We haven't been requiring it, when they would like to have that for tax records, the freestanding ones aren't addressed here. Uh, solely because it was messy and not a, not a precedent issue.
So are they not allowed?
At this point, no. But they can, we can definitely work this later on. This was just to address the utility scale and if I can shoot warning the building on in one at the same time without getting too lost in the weeds, then that's what I was doing.
Okay.
There is a hole in there, no doubt.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you see that as a future, future.
Yes, uh, this is just targeted towards what we're doing.
All right, Travis, are there any concerns or?
No.
No, I think, uh, go back to, now, now we go back through and look at setbacks and stuff.
On setbacks, uh, clarification to, how do we define the edge to edge on setbacks? Uh, we've got other places in.
In the ordinance, it's defined as a setback is defined from the production area to the building site, so for, or for the, let's say a house moving from where the solar.
Edge of a panel?
Or the set of the property.
Okay.
To the, uh, essentially the closest part of the building, the house to that site.
So it's the nearest part of the property, uh, under construction or under, under use to whatever the object is, the church, the cemetery, the spirit mound, the whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
So somebody could site all their panels on the, the, you know, a half mile away from the property line and that would not count as any of their setback, their setback would still start at the property line. So like, like say they, they lease, you know, a one mile square, square block, they put all their panels on the northern half of that the, the, it would be drawn from the, not the edge of the panel.
They'd have to redo the property, well, yeah, it'd be from wherever the property lines are at. Yeah, that's how we've done it in the past, that's how it's defined.
So you could plant Christmas trees in the southern half, solar panels in the northern half and the, and the setback would be from the edge of the Christmas trees.
Yep, that's not the way the ordinance is.
What's that?
That's not the way the ordinance is right now. It's from the closest part of, if they were a half mile away and that's the solar farm that they've got a conditional use permit for, that's where it's at, it's not the whole process.
Production area to the.
And you know, they're, they're leasing it for a lot per acre, so maybe they're only leasing exactly the rectangle under their, you know, panels.
But even if they are leasing the whole thing, it's where that solar farm is going to be located. That's where you measure from the closest point from that production for solar farm, whether it's the fence, because they're requiring a fence around this, so you would measure from that fence to the closest point of the house. That's the way the rest of the ordinance is written.
That's why I asked the question. So.
Now, if you want to change.
So we're all on the same page about what this means.
The line that is required the minimum business for many lot line that establish the area within the principal use must be erected or placed, the definition of setback is defined by section, uh, shall be, uh, shall apply to all animal feeding operations. So here it's a lot to the production area to.
The production area, so like if it's a hog building, it's the corner of that hog building, not the corner of that forty acres it sits on.
Right.
That's the way it's been interpreted the last.
How many years? Lot line that establishes the area within the principal use. I think we go with lot line too.
Maybe this might be a place where Michael might want to.
Or some, we can find that in this ordinance, because it's different issue.
Yeah, yeah, since, that's why I ask is that, uh, that, uh, that that particular definition could get important at some point here.
So do we need to add a definition of setback to this ordinance?
Of general, where, where the setback from, from the facility starts. Uh, Dave, Dave was waving his hand a little bit.
I mean, I was saying, I think a lot of this can get fixed in your conditional use permit because all this takes a conditional use, which, because every application's different where you're putting the thing at. So, and my biggest thing would be is make sure you notify all the adjoining landowners when you do this commis- conditional.
Which is already in the ordinance.
That's right.
Which is in the ordinance, so that should give a lot of, a lot of people the ease to know that you're going to get a certified letter, is that how you notify them?
Yep.
So you're going to get a letter in the mail and then you address each, because every place you put this, it's going to have a little bit different. You can't blanket it with the zoning, but the conditional use is a great idea to do it that way.
Yeah, I think, I think as far as defining where the setback starts on the property, on the proposed, uh, proposed development property, I think it's, it's appropriate to do that in the ordinance.
And have it say the leased property, you know, just say any, all ground that's leased from there is your property setback. From the leased, whatever they lease.
Leased or owned.
Yes.
They made purchase.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it shouldn't, it should just be from what they're actually using.
Well, if they're, if they've rented a hundred and sixty acres, but are only using eighty of it.
But they have the option if they're renting.
But only their conditional use permit covers the eighty.
Okay, then they, they can cover it again in the conditional use.
You are, because if they, if they go to expand that, they have to get another initial.
And they have to, if they have to get another permit, then you're covered.
Right.
And if they want to change where the lot lines are at, they can just re-flat.
Yeah, so that conditional use saves you guys a lot of headaches.
Right, I just want to keep it the same throughout the whole ordinance, not, this is just a section of the ordinance when we talk ordinance. So like how you're notified isn't in this section, it's in the, it's in the beginning of the, the whole ordinance.
But just to make everybody more comfortable that this is not the final say on this thing. You have this conditional use and that's the final say, so make sure you're at that meeting and that's where you can hash out a lot of stuff.
Yep.
So that's true.
Other items, Dick?
Not general, general items, but, uh, I think we've got to address a couple of our setbacks at least, at least talk about them.
There's a big difference between a hundred and twenty-five feet in a mile. One thing that I have thought about a lot recently is, uh, part of the question for me, I don't want to discourage solar development. I think that it's, I think that it has the potential to be really beneficial for our county. So a question for me is what is, what's the number there that makes a company say, ah, South Dakota or Clay County is too much of a headache to, to deal with, we're, we're going to you again.
Yeah. Where did they come with the hundred and twenty-five, Dick?
I think we pulled that number kind of out of the air, you know.
No, that was taken from the Missouri River.
Yeah, yeah, that's it, that's it, it's Missouri River setback and we're kind of working first with some of the others, the, the schools, residences and that sort of stuff and it, uh, felt convenient to match that up. So, so there was, there was some discussion on, on parks in general. Uh, that's one thing that, that kind of slipped past me, uh, was, uh, originally in the ordinance, in the line that says Spirit Mount Park at a hundred and twenty-five feet was originally, uh, public parks. And we did, uh, uh, switch that down to just Spirit Mount Park. And there was, uh, part of that was is to avoid issues down along the Missouri River on the national, national park along the Missouri River. And.
The vast majority of that's in our seat.
Yeah, but.
And I think there's also the idea that somebody could just take a piece of ground and string and say this is a park now.
And declare it a park. But my, my point was, was that's a, that's a private park.
Yeah.
That's not a public park. Public park is owned by a, and that's defined in ordinance as being, uh, by a, uh, owned by a public entity. And if we were to do it, uh, I, I'd actually be most comfortable switching that line from Spirit Mount Park back to public parks because I, I think that there ought to be some protections on, uh, lands down along the Missouri too. But.
Could we add national historic sites to that? I mean, because I, I, I think that that is, that is one of the things that's unique. Um, is that it's, uh, part of a national recreational trail, it is a national historic site. It's on the National Register of Historic Places, um, so it, it, it has, so, so I like the idea of public parks, but I would like to add maybe national historic sites because that, that is what makes it unusual.
One, one thing with, uh, you know, Ian, let me, let me, uh, tell you the reasoning for not going with all public parks or national parks or anything like that is that since the. Tell you the reasoning for not going with all public parks or national parks or anything like that is that since the. National river is linear. We would be exclu- if we say we went with a. One mile or even a half mile exclusion zone from all national parks, for instance. We'd be we'd be disallowing a lot of landowners down along the river from from putting up a solar farm. And. Do we want to do that? And that was that was a lot of the. Yes, some of us do, but but there are a lot of landlords there that go, wait a minute, you're 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 doing a taking of my property, property rights here. Whether it's a legal take like taking or not, defined legal taking or not be another. Issue, but I think that's one of the reasons why we limited it to Spirit Mount. And with that background, what are the any thoughts on on those sorts of issues? And as we go ahead. In going through this document, the. The South Dakota Guidelines for Complying with Federal and State Preservation Laws. It seems to me like. Taking quite a lot of land as I've made my own map on. Looking at one hundred and twenty five feet versus half mile versus one mile even in two miles. Is really gets to be big is is was handed to us here a little while ago. It seems to me like. A reasonable number would end up being in the half mile or mile range. And we sure let ourselves out of a lot of extra federal hoops and state hoops if we went to a mile. And I don't know if everyone's read this particular document.
But that's just a guideline that they.
That's right.
They don't. I mean, they can say yes or no. It doesn't mean anything.
Right.
They get to review it.
Yes. And then we but but they're part of their review is us providing them data for review. So we. We're the. Someone who are along the lines got to pay for that review, which would be the which would be the applicant.
Right.
And how many if. If there's a significant cost and especially delay to a project because of that, I think that would end up being a big issue.
That's up to them.
Yeah, but on the other hand, you know, since since some of the. Testimony this morning, we've gotten that. It seems like at least to some of the folks that. One mile exclusion would be acceptable. We ought to at least consider a half mile to a to a mile.
If I get one question, is is their proposed area closer than a mile to Spirit Mount or are they outside of the mile anyways?
I do not know and it's.
We have no idea.
It's probably best for me not to know.
We don't know who's coming. We have. We don't have any plans. This is just general for the whole county.
Okay.
This isn't site specific.
They they haven't.
Nobody's coming.
We hear buzz, but I am I'm not.
No application.
No application yet at all.
Right.
Yeah, I think that I think the the one mile on Spirit Mount, if you get up there and look, that would be a a good. You know, and I think and you could just leave it like that, Spirit Mount, because that's the main thing in the county. Everything's gonna be conditional use anyways, but at least that one's taken care of. Because every little park's gonna have a different amount of trees around it with what you're gonna see from it anyway.
Yeah, I I like I like the idea of a mile. I you know, I I think, you know, I I I read the. What is it called? The view study that the National Park Service did. It's called the they did a visual research inventory. That's public information. If anybody wants to see copies of it, I've got I made copies to bring today. And it it just seems to me that given the significance of the historic site. You know, a a mile I don't think is prohibitive to a solar company coming in. I don't think it's gonna discourage anyone. But but it but it also protects the the view shed. You know, a place that, you know, is of national, national significance. So I I would go I would go for a mile.
I think a mile is too far. You know, Dick's same argument that he used against the river applies here. You've taken a lot of land from people. You know, and you have a gravel pit right across the road and a hog farm three quarters a mile north. And numbers are continuously increasing for visitors to Spirit Mountain. So those two things aren't detracting from it. I just don't see how a solar farm is gonna detract from it.
Want to weigh in here?
I. I was gonna say, I like the mile. You know, it's. But I agree with Travis also. That unlike the other areas, because I live in this area, obviously. I go to top Spirit Mount. I can see my house. I sit in my recruiter, I can see Spirit Mount. So. The mile, I think, is I I do like the mile set. I have a question on, you know, like Dave said, you know, we leave the Spirit Mount Park. So what are our what are our setbacks? I'm I'm not a hunter, so forgive me. Do we have any public access hunting ground in Clay County?
Yeah.
So is that addressed?
Nope.
So that fall under any categories? Should that be addressed? Public access areas. Should it? And there is. I do like the mile.
It it with a CUP, they could if they said, oh, we could make this work if it was two hundred yards closer. They could propose that still in a CUP with a mile setback that.
That'd be a variance.
Oh, yeah, variance.
It wouldn't be a variance. The CUP's footage goes works both ways. It doesn't just go out, it goes in too.
So they could or.
They do a conditional use permit and you can vary. You can move. You can move the footage.
Make it less.
Yes, we we can as a board is is to clarify that. Right, that's what I thought. Okay.
So that allows some flexibility as well.
Although I'd be surprised if a company decided they wanted to gamble on.
Well, it's it's pretty. I think that's too is sort of site specific because say if someone wanted to. Do something over to the west that would be out of the east gate. If it's not within the east gate that that. National Park Service is is put together. I think we would look pretty favorably on a. A change on a setback. You know, it could be it could be a half mile in some direction. Or it would not. Be a visual impact on viewing from the mound.
So.
Because the east gate itself is really, it's a large part of what makes that place special.
I agree with that. My question is, so if we did, someone did come for a CUP and say, you know, I want it, you know, two hundred yards closer. Then it does have to be reviewed by the preservation.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
That's I just want to.
But that could be a fairly short review, you know, if there's if there's really no. Substantive issue and the National Park Service was saying, oh, yeah, it's okay with us. No big deal. You know, I think it could be a fairly short review, fairly short. Resolution to the problem.
I noticed that there's no kind of screening or vegetation requirement. I assume that would be part of the CUP application. Or do we want to address that on the ordinance level for every project?
It's addressed on page three.
Page three, okay, with which.
Proposed gradient use of natural vegetation. Don't they want to like on the. Sound that probably will include trees or something.
On page three?
Yep, very top.
The very top. Oh, I see. Okay, yeah.
And that's why.
But that's under the. It's under conditional use. Okay, good.
And that's where proposed grading too, that would kind of address this topographic modifications.
One thing that somebody brought up today that has also, you know, people have called me about it with concerns. Is lighting and the concern about, you know, the the preservation of dark skies out there. I think the one mile setback will help enormously with that.
He has emailed me about that lighting. They're listening in. Solar farms have phenomenal lighting that is required for security purposes at gates, entrances, and is generally downcast. There not be any lighting throughout the project as some areas, as some of it might be.
Okay, yeah, and I think that we're downcast might be something that we want to consider using. You know, I I I live in a place where I I get direct, very, very bright light from. The National Guard Armory and from the parking lots and, you know, I I. It would make a huge difference if it were downcast lighting. And so we might want to consider putting that in. You know, just because if 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 you're in a residence. You know, that that lighting, you know, if it's close to you is really gonna affect you. And although I I think there are most solar companies would be very nice about making sure it's downcast lighting, but. I wonder if we wouldn't want to make that a general a general requirement on the periphery of. These are solar projects.
Well, there there too. I think that would be something that would be appropriate at the condition use stage. Stage because it wouldn't necessarily be a. An issue everywhere. There might be a solar farm or even parts of this particular one even or, you know, if if there were to be. In the area of the of the mound. And we're we're pretty aware of of that issue here in Prowlions that caused a couple of special elections many years back.
Other comments from commissioners?
There were a few concerns about residences. Are we comfortable with one hundred and twenty five feet on that?
That that particular issue, you know, I I guess I'm on I'm the for all of you out there, I'm the commissioner. Assigned to planning and zoning and.
That's why we keep throwing questions.
So I've been so. We did talk a little bit about that during that, but one of the things that I brought up during planning and zoning and that I brought up in discussions. There is that, for instance. A couple of counties north, that was the primary issue for denying a conditional use permit to a solar farm is that. There were a couple of the solar farm was going to get kind of close to a fairly big residential development. Close to a lake. As well as there were a number, there were two or three. Rural residents that bought acreages that were out in the middle of the sectional ways. And so. Proposed solar farm, and I think they were like fifty feet setbacks from from the the guy's property. And his property was long in order to get a a connection out to the road. So the. Solar farm could put panels up. Completely surrounding his property, be fifty feet away from his house all the way or from his. Property line all the way around the outside. That's where the property line versus structures comes into play. And and he would have a essentially a tunnel down to the public road. Between these solar panels on either side. And depending on how high the solar panels are mounted. Could make a difference to him. And the their county commission actually went through their planning, got to county commission and county commission denied the. Conditional use permit based on a couple of guys' testimony where they were gonna have those tunnels along their quarter mile long driveways. And that's where sometimes these kind of issues can come up.
But under the the CUP, say. He is a property owner and it's one hundred and twenty five feet. Up my. Is it possible for me to come with planning and zoning during this conditional use permit and say, I'm more comfortable with five hundred feet? That can be changed then, correct? At that stage, yeah, okay.
Or I'm, you know, the other thing is that the commission, I think, can write under, you know, that this is approved under the condition that.
Yep. I just want everybody to know that that that's not set in stone that that can be adjusted.
I think I'm almost ready to move on. I I would I would support adding back in public parks. I think we have that defined elsewhere at the one hundred and twenty five feet. And then based on all the discussion today, I think that I'd probably be comfortable with the mile setback from Spirit Mount. So leaving Spirit Mount in there as its own line, but also adding in public parks. I think they should be treated the same. And I don't I don't think that that one hundred and twenty five feet would have a, I mean, I think it'd be foolish to build one of these within one hundred and twenty five feet of the river. So, you know. Yeah, can't imagine somebody's really planning on doing that, so. Minimum impact.
So you would add a category seeing national parks or public parks?
Public parks as that's that's addressed elsewhere in the ordinance, right? We have no. What what do we have?
I did, I'm sorry, but I think you misunderstood recreation area parks. We don't have. And now we do have recreation defined private, public.
So a public recreation area?
Public, no, that that would be.
We'll give you time.
We'll come. Well, I would just say I'd be interested in considering that. I think treating all the parks with if if that's gonna be our, you know. I I think that 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 minimum amount is appropriate. I think that being closer than that to a to a public park doesn't seem like it's be required to cite to cite something somewhere. That that seems reasonable to me.
I am a little concerned about what Dick had said earlier, that if you broaden it. You know, then there can be no. Solar pan, you know, industrial level solar panels within a mile of the river.
Which is why I was saying separating.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you would have a separate classification for other public parks and that separation would be.
Okay, excellent.
That's what it's.
Excellent.
But then the the Spirit Mount line.
Agreed.
And become can't change that to a mile based on.
Okay. Other.
Oh, that's on the top.
Other other comments? It it does sound as though this needs to go back for revision. Sound right?
Remand to the remand to the. Wash our our motion to go ahead to second reading and. Remanded to planning and zoning for these particular revisions.
So is that a motion?
I'd so move. Can I do that in one motion?
No.
No?
Trying to rescind our first motion, right? So I'll rescind my first motion.
Second.
Did you make the first?
Right, I thought I'm.
Did I, Carrie? I thought Dick, I thought Dick made.
But that's that's. Like Dick seconded me, but I might.
Yeah, that's six. That's six pages back.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Jeffrey moved seconded by Dick.
Yeah, and I'd accept that as a recession.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second on the table and that would be to move it to the second. Reading. So a yes vote would mean we.
Well, I think we just rescinded that, right?
Oh, we just rescinded it. Okay, you rescinded your motions. Okay, okay. So we don't have to vote on that, but we can now vote on 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 Dick's motion.
On motion to. Send the revised or revised proposal back to planning and zoning.
Okay, and there's a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion carries. So this goes back to planning and zoning. And I I do want to say thank you to everybody who came out today. I think as a result of your input, we'll have a better. I think as a result of your input, we'll have a better ordinance. So sometimes it works the way it's supposed to, thank you.
Now we go back to the boring stuff.
Yeah, well, actually, we, the next, next item on the agenda is a resolution for the raise grant application. So to approve the raise grant application and authorize the chair to sign it. And this is an application to for two hundred fifty five thousand dollars in federal park. Planning money, it would be strictly for planning purposes. As a result of previous input, we have incorporated into the grant that there would be no, I mean, the language, Jeffrey, no involuntary. Taking. Yeah, so Jeffrey can give us the exact language, but essentially there were a lot of concerns from landowners about. Trail going through their property and so on, about eminent domain, and so we've made it very clear in the grant that none of that money would be used.
Yeah, I can read the paragraph there, um, so following the events, that was these, the the public comment period that generated a dot. Dot democracy map activity is what they're referencing here, so following these events, some members of the public expressed concerns about private property rights and whether the public was being properly involved. The counties are applying for planning money, but have reaffirmed that they will continue to have an open dialogue with the public and private property owners every step of the way. South Dakota is a state that highly values private property rights. Many private property owners in the region had land condemned when dams were built on the Missouri River in the nineteen fifties. The counties will respect these sensitivities by committing to not using involuntary means to gain nonexisting access to land needed for trail development. The counties will only consider consultants who respect this aspect of the area's culture.
So the the motion would be to.
And there's, there's some other language in there too, in other areas as well, so on the previous page, see I'm forty eight. We have a minimizing disruption paragraph in here, so let's see. So local landowners will be educated about easements, much of the area is agricultural, but many private properties along the desirable pathways may also contain marginal lands. So educating landowners about voluntary easements that would permit them to gain additional revenue and enable the trail network to grow. Prime agricultural land is the least desirable because both counties have identified the protection of agricultural uses as important in their planning documents. So that was another one, there were some people that were expressing a lot of concerns about possible impacts on the agricultural nature of landscapes. I think that was intended to address that. And there's another one that's about, oh, page thirty nine, we really tried to make sure there was no questions on this, so page thirty nine. So that was about about the importance of disentangling hunter hiker and cyclist, hunter and hiker cyclist conflicts. By giving hikers and cyclists a dedicated place to go that hunters would not use or at least note exercise caution around. Some residents have issues with trespassers crossing their property without their permission to access the water or shoreline. So gaining consensus from these stakeholders will be vital to the planning process. A public access trail would prevent these types of conflicts as well as providing users a sanctioned experience. So it'd be directing what might be casual, inappropriate use of people's existing private properties. And and focusing people into areas where we've determined are are more appropriate. Maybe, those are some, I might have more, but I don't need to go on there.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things I want to add to this discussion is that way back when I did a, you know, probably ten years ago now. I did a series of ten focus groups in the area. Each of which focused on a particular or incorporated a particular group of people, so we did seniors, we did young families. You know, various communities within our community and one of the prime. Every single focus group included extended discussion about access to the river and access. You know, for things like kiknicking, hiking and so on. And even people who were disabled, I mean, I I I guess I didn't expect this as a focus group leader, but even people who were disabled said, yeah, I I would like to be able to get my wheelchair. In a place where, you know, I could sit, sit by the river and so I think. That is, that that's one of the the goals of this grant, right, is to make it possible for people to spend time. By the river, in the grant, it also says, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeffrey, that a route immediately adjacent to the river. Is probably not going to work, right, because the city of Vermillion learned a lesson, I think, about that by citing a trail right on the Vermillion River. And that trail washed out and it's still washed out because there hasn't been money to to repair, so.
Yeah, they specifically note outside of the five hundred year flood plain and then also not in areas highly subject to erosion. So I think that both those are intended to address that and then on page forty six, well, that's forty six within our package here. There's a a part about some of the existing trails that have experienced damage because of inappropriate sightings, so it actually points to that as. As something that the the study would would seek to address and would recognize is already existing and trying to figure out, so let's see. One outcome of the planning process will, to achieve is planning for the repair of some existing trails, trails in the area degrade over time as a result of flooding and river wandering. Trails needing attention includes Clay County Parks Trail and the Cotton Park Trail in Vermillion. The Martin Creek Trail was damaged in a flood, but that's in in the process of being repaired, so. Maintenance volunteer community, so decided beyond the five hundred year flood plain as much as possible. On locations unlikely to change due to erosion in the foreseeable future would be desirable, so just kind of. Yeah, encouraging the 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 planners to 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 recognize the importance of those effects on the ground, so.
You're still looking for. A motion then?
Yes.
And move to accept the race grant or submit this raise grant application, have you sign it?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion?
So there's. Public comments, I think. A lot of people in the room here probably.
I was. I'm Dave Hertz and I have a place now along the river and stuff and I'm just wondering on that grant money. The two hundred fifty thousand, is that just to study this and put the whole study together for two hundred fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Public comments.
It's just public comment and study, it's, it's not, it's just the feasibility and then. And that grant money, you know, if they do a bike trail or whatever, is that money to do? The trails, is that, would that be a grant too, when we try to get that?
I would expect, we would seek grant money for that, I I think the political reality in Clay County and our financial. Reality, certainly as long as we're building the jail and housing people offsite, is that we don't have have the funds available to do that on our own.
Exactly, so we're not going to be sticking a bunch of Clay County money into bike trails and that kind of thing, so.
During, during my term, that's off the table.
Yeah, that's, I didn't figure we had money to do that anyways, and then the second thing a lot of people are are very concerned about is the little green line that they drew on the. Map right next to the river, which in my opinion, if you just took that out of there, which she, you just stated that you're not going to take anybody's property. So if they just remove that green line, I bet you half the people wouldn't even be here.
No maps that are being submitted include that green.
You know, so yeah, so just the green line's off the table that goes along the river and I think that would save a lot of headaches right there, that's all I got to say.
You got it.
This day is nothing to do with not doing the bike trails, just doing the study for the possibility.
A forum where hopefully anyone who wants to comment on this would would come to those meetings and express their their thoughts, concerns and.
And hopefully they put something along Timber Road for a bike trail, that makes more sense than anything, work with the county and.
I.
I'm sure that'll all come up in that.
I've ticked off a couple of folks that don't drive a real long trip to Timber Road by saying that that's probably one of the best, best.
But it'd be safer for everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
Because right now they're using it anyways and it's just hard for.
That's my point, they're on the edge of the road now and I'm just amazed nobody's gotten killed by getting a boost from a vendor and.
No, I mean.
That's more or less my point.
Was in a coma?
And maybe we get a free road out of the deal too, you know.
Glenn Gilbertson, I am a resident of Timber Road.
Yes.
So where you're coming from, you stole half of my points here. So this grant, the study grant, federal dollars, correct?
Yes.
So. This grant money that you're talking about, if it actually comes to fruition, that's all grant money?
Yes, it's a, there's no match required and in our, in our budget that we're proposing to them, we are only proposing in kind matches of administrative support for managing the grab. And possibly meeting spaces if we're having public comments and need a public space to happen, so.
So you're talking several million dollars, correct?
Uh, two hundred fifty five thousand.
I mean, if this project goes through, I don't.
Oh.
I'm not in favor of this grant either.
Yeah.
With the project itself.
I I would expect that building out, I mean, if, you know, if we can plan a robust trail system. And it really connects a lot of the things we'd want to see, I think that that is a mini multimillion dollar project, but it's also a multi decade project. So I don't think that there is any expectation and in none of our discussions, as anyone expected, that what we're planning is something that we're going to try to like build. Within the next five years, we would be, we would be, the goal would be to identify feasible sections. Do some cost benefit analysis so that you're weighing which ones are the easiest, most affordable places to start, where there's the most public support. And then prioritizing them and then constructing a planning document that with all that information concrete. We can then begin seeking that grant funding to actually do construction on, say, the first mile, you know, or the first. Two miles or the first trail segment or something like that, so it would, it would have to this stage, I I just think there's no way to imagine it being anything other than that, yeah.
I I just, I'm against this thing, I don't think it's, it's not a a need item. Use grant dollars for a want item or something that you wish for, I think that's irresponsible use of taxpayer money. Thirty four point two trillion is our national debt and I, I know this is. Tiny drop in bucket, but I don't want, we should be using this money to add to that, as far as Timber Road. Yes, it needs to be fixed, but I'd hate to see this. Needs to that end, I've lived on that my entire life, all the county roads are in the same shape, we chip seal them every few years, we keep getting by, so. I just don't want to see this, I think there'd be. The safety is the main thing, right now, it's a huge safety risk with bicycles. And I think this would be more of that same concern, also maintenance, county's going to wind up maintaining this thing, correct? And we don't, I don't see us being able to afford that either, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Becky Aga, I live on Meckling Road, which is just off Timber Road and like Glenn, I've lived there my whole life. My husband and I, and along with a family trust that I manage and am owner in. We own a substantial amount of ground along Timber Road, we own river property as well. Yes, the river thing is very, I'm passionate about it. I made several notes here though, so I apologize if I jump around on a few things. First. Jeffrey, you had mentioned notifying people.
Yep.
My husband and I attended a meeting in, I don't remember if it was December or January, I believe December.
In December.
And you personally said you would let me know.
Got your phone number, yep.
But I did not get a call about today's second reading of the residence.
So, so what I, what I took your name down is that should we get that grant, should we get this grant, these would open up public comment periods?
I took it to mean.
And and I would invite you to that, I will invite you to that should we get the grant, so.
And at that meeting, I asked, and I would ask again, have you talked to any landowners in any? Ways, shape or fashion personally, other than us coming to you?
Yes, I've had discussions with other.
In any of the proposed. Thought about areas. That to me, at that prior meeting, you indicated that that is something whomever this grant study goes to, they would do that. I don't want to hear from somebody else, I want to hear from you guys because you are our representative, representation out in the rural areas. And we rely on you for a lot of things. Another thing was, go ahead.
Was that, was that question to all of us about speaking to be? Numerous.
Yeah, and hopefully you are considering all of the constituents of the county. This grant, I was under the impression that this was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant and you, when this was read, you said it was a two hundred and fifty five thousand dollar grant.
Yes.
Again, and at that prior meeting, Mr. Hammond, you said, well, we all said, free money. And I remember your comment, well, it is free money.
Yeah.
There is no such thing as free money. Somebody pays for that and I would guarantee you that my federal tax dollars go into that free money in some way, shape or form.
Yes.
So in agreement with Glenn, this is frivolous to have somebody come in and say, oh, we should do this, you know who's making off with this? That company, they're saying, share, we'll do it, we'll tell you whether or not you need one. And they run away and with our money. I compare this to the solar project that we just talked about and the views. You know, what about the view out by Farm Door? To a bike path along Timber Road? Now. The natural areas, are you going to disturb a natural area to put in a bike path? Now, what is natural, I have ancestors that settled some of the ground that we own along, well, what we own along the river. And they came here. Not to preserve exactly what was there, they came to, they saw the opportunity and they farmed, they. Spent their life. Caretaking for the ground, which is what we as farmers do every day. It's our response, responsibility, our stewardship. So again, back to the. The solar thing, it just seems like there's different views for different projects, you know, and and that all is all encompassing. What you want isn't what necessarily I want, what someone else here wants is not necessarily what I want, you have to come to that agreement. I did. Want to point out that I am probably part of. I am part of what I read in a letter that I was able to obtain from a local organization. And I guess I have a false Republican insistence. Now, they can say what they want.
Like to read it.
But I think I would like to say what I want. And I don't want, I don't think we need this. I understand it going along the river, it is beautiful, I enjoy it too, there's recreation. And what one person's recreation might be is different from another person's recreation, you need to consider all of that. But I think primarily what we need is you as a board talking to people. Individually that would or could be affected by a proposed area. Because I don't want some. Somebody from California coming in and saying, oh, well, we're here to do this study. They won't get on my land, any of it. So I would. Vote against this if I were you, because it's frivolous spend, expensive tax dollars, we don't need it. Thank you. Other?
My name's Laura Saga, I'm the other pastor. Becky, but the the thing that kind of, I'm not going to speak for or against or not, I'm obviously against, but. There was a letter sent out by the Sierra Club. That I'd be glad to show you if you want to look at it here.
I have a printed copy if you'd like.
Okay.
I'll read it.
Okay, it says, the Clay County Commission will hear items of environmental interest this week. The meeting will be held at nine AM on Tuesday, February thirteenth, Vermillion Public Library. To accommodate the number of people that are expected to attend. The first item on this public hearing is proposed solar ordinance, this will be heard about nine twenty. The ordinance can be found here and it's just, it lives a link. Scroll down to the announcement agenda and the proposal, your link, immediately following this is a rest, a resolution to be applied for to raise. is a rest, uh a resolution to be applied for to raise grant funds for the trail planning. But because of the false Republican insistence that there will be a threat to private landowners and rights, the expected landowners turn up, show up in force for this protest. That is word for word.
You wanted to help him?
We just had a, when you opened your meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, unity and nobody should be pointed out to be a bad guy anywhere.
Amen.
Um, so instead of trying to drive, which stick your hand out and say hi to somebody.
Thank you, Lars.
Eric Freeman. Uh, so feasibility study, I'm wondering if you could also speak a little bit to the federal dollars that this is coming from? Is this sort of block money that's reserved for states? How does it, what's the intention of it? Why do we think we fit that intention? And then secondly, it seems like the overwhelming consensus here is that do we need this as a town, as a county? And uh my guess is, is that this would be part of the feasibility, that there would be surveys, there would be maybe focus groups that that the idea is to gather information from, from all constituents to arrive at whether that rather than, it's not part of your application, is it? Like, do you have to demonstrate need for this? Or, or will this follow from the grant?
So maybe just.
Those were questions I, I would address both of those. Um, so, uh, so yes, this is federal dollars. So this is a, a federal DOT grant program. Um, it is highly competitive. We applied for this grant last year. We didn't get it. Our income tax paid for somebody else's project somewhere else. So the pool of money is appropriated. It's gonna get spent somewhere. My goal is to get two hundred and fifty-five thousand of it for us, because I can, I, I believe that there's benefits that we could have from it. Whenever I see a room full of people who care strongly about this issue, it heightens for me the importance of trying to get this funding. Um, yes, Becky, uh it, it's important uh for, for, for your input to be heard in this, and there are like fourteen thousand and some on people in the county. Um, if I could have a face-to-face conversation with every one of them, remember everything that everyone said, and then in my own mind somehow um turn that all into a plan uh myself, uh, you know, that'd be worth two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Nobody would pay me, but I couldn't do it. Um, so, so this is a way, to me, the, the primary goal of this is a way to ensure that that process is handled really robustly, and that we are paying for the mailings to get everybody to site, to, to events that we are, that we are doing that, that work um that you're requesting. I think that it is absolutely important for every voice to be heard, and I think that a plan that came from just one perspective isn't gonna be a feasible plan. I don't think it would get built. Um, and I don't, I just think that would be a waste of time. Um, your other question was about um the economic impact. So we do point to that, because that's one of the criteria on for, for the uh, for, for this grant. So they wanna know, is this gonna have an economic benefit, benefit um for the area if they give it to us? Um, and we point to work that the National Park Service has done, that has quantified that. They say that there is eight million-ish dollars of economic activity uh due to the Missouri National Recreation River. I, when I look at the reality on the ground here, I'm seeing Yankton County getting most of that. I'm seeing Yankton County's recreation opportunities being more robust than ours. People going to more restaurants there, people staying at their hotels to go and enjoy and camp at their campground to enjoy what they have there. I think that this resource is, if anything, even more beautiful in the stretch that goes through Clay County. And so in my mind, I would like to see us highlighting this as a reason to cite your business in the area, because people are gonna wanna live here, will have a great quality of life, um a place for us to get more recreation. I mean, I, I see economic benefits coming from this, but they are based on real data. They are based on data worth that the National Park Service has done is what we referenced in this grant application, so.
One question I have too.
Yeah.
Are you guys working with Jim over at the Vermillion uh Chamber Development? So this grant would kind of be in conjunction with them, because they would have a lot of good insight.
They provided a letter of support for this. Yep, there was a robust letter of support.
And as you're just added that, so you were saying earlier that funds could also be used to improve existing uh trails.
Might identify.
To provide access. Certainly one of those access points are for disabled, are for uh veterans with disabilities, providing, for instance, boardwalk access to points in trail systems that already exist would get significant usage, I think, and provide access to people who currently do not have access to the river.
Yeah, there's a note in here that uh talks about disability access and how there's kind of a movement more towards informational uh approaches to that, rather than building every trail so that the slope is appropriate for every wheelchair to go on it. It's the understanding that different people will choose different sorts of recreation based on what their needs and abilities are. So, so some of it would be trying to develop more publicly available information about um what are the ADA uh 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 characteristics of like a specific existing site, you know? If you go down to Clay County Park, could you get out of your, in your wheelchair and access a trail there, you know, things like that versus, can you go up to the top of Mulberry Bend, things like that?
Yeah. And I, I'm already, tonight worked here in Brooklyn, I lived here for three years. And I'm a cyclist, and we've been talking about safety. Um, and I ride Timber Road and Meckling Road a lot, and so I think part of the reason people have identified having a trail is because there are many times when I'm out there, I don't feel safe. I have, I, and I don't, we don't ride three across, we ride on the line as close as possible, but many times I don't feel very safe out there. So I think someone addressed safety. I think this is a, a piece of it is that it does put you off the road, so I mean, we have many, I've got pickup trucks come really, really close to me. Um, the question I have with this trail, are they gonna do concrete? Are they gonna make it like a limestone like they did out on the Mickelson Trail? Concrete has its own set of issues that I don't think is particularly, do you know?
Uh, none of that is specified in here, and answering questions like that would be what some of this money would.
Or if Timber Road needs to be improved, put a shoulder on it for us, and don't put those rumble bars on it, because you got tires this, this wide, you can crash. But I think that's part of it that we need to share. Put on hand, but I think people lots have seen cyclists or even runners or walkers along those narrow county roads, which are beautiful to ride on, but let's share it. And, and I know there's cyclists that can be rude, and you may see some of them going to, but most of us don't. We're out there to recreate, so. I'm a landowner in Charles Mix County along the river, quite a bit of acreage, and I understand the concerns. But I think we can all work together. Mickelson Trail, I had friends that owned, that was a major controversial issue. Now, people that own land there, it's a boon. They don't mind seeing that trail. They have access. If you sell your property and you can say, I'm next to a trail, a recreation trail, it ups your value. And I think part of the issue is even when we put in Cotton Park Trail, always gonna be trash, there was gonna be trespassing. That's not the case. Most, most people that are gonna walk, ride, walk their dog, whatever, they're not gonna throw trash. They're gonna be respectful. Most of, I mean, not everybody. And that's, that can be said for everybody, we're not, everyone is not as respectful as they should be. But I think that's part of why this is coming forth, both from Yankton and Vermillion, is it is a safety. It's a safety thing, and it's to get people out and recreating. The homers now, and people coming up, they wanna be outside, and they wanna have access to safe places to recreate. So that's just my, so if we don't do this, let's do the county roads, at least put a little, a little shoulder on it for walkers and cyclists. Thank you.
Thank you. And um just uh speaking to that issue of land value, there have been some studies done, and um uh so, so.
Those are referenced in the grant application.
Referenced in the grant application that um depending on whether it's a trail, a green belt, or a trail with a green belt, um property values increase to four and five percent depending on, on, on the trail and you know, seeing um in the, being part of actually creating a, a trail uh years ago um along Narragansett in Rhode Island. It uh, before, everybody was really, really nervous about what was gonna happen. But they worked very uh well with communities, and they came up with a trail that um people really enjoyed. And indeed, property values along the trail did, did go up. Um, so I, you know, there, there, there is some, some things to be said in terms of, um in terms of property values, and I think personally, we're gonna.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
But uh, first gotten all, you guys were applying for the flat grant. You applied for this one last year, and you applied for probably seemingly a few others, Jeff, I imagine.
This is the, this is essentially the third attempt on this project. So it, so the, the raised grant last year was a broader scope. We, we tightened it up and refined it to meet the criteria in the flat grant. And then from the flat grant application to this one, the only real changes are changes that we attempted to make to address concerns like those that you brought up and that you, that you brought up at the, at the raised grant one. So this is substantially the same, or at the flat grant, this is substantially the same application as we submitted for the flat grant, except for amendments we made to try to address the concerns that you guys brought up.
So I, I'd like a little clarification. Are you guys excited by, about an Appalachian trail style thing or an Ice Age? Because that's what you conveyed to me in the last grant. Is that the type of grant this is? Like the end goal, you get a feasibility study, and you could hire somebody and they could, they could write up a glowing feasibility study for you. And it could look beautiful and everybody gets sold on it, much like they did to the Rails to Trails Trail. That's a little tabor up to Platte right now, which is under a lot of legal scrutiny right now. But if they want that, if they, if they push that, does this then become a sales pitch that all landowners have to go and contend against? And I'm a little concerned about how you went about getting that flat grant approved last time, when you just invited friends to the Missouri River, South Dakota Kayak Association, called them public meetings, but nobody else was invited, nobody else knew they were going on. And the only reason we knew the flat grant was even being put in is because it was brought up at city council meeting, and somebody was paying attention to the city council meeting. So I was a little concerned about that. And then when Elizabeth told me that, that Betty told me that it was going to be a Appalachian trail, national park type of pie in the sky thing in an email, I was like, okay, well, clarify yourself, and I guess.
Yeah, I, I, I think um it, it was probably in reference to trail maintenance. Um, and I think what I was trying to, to say is that um, you know, all of these trails are um uh maintained by uh, so, or many of these trails are, are maintained by associations in the same way as the Appalachian Trail is and uh the Ice Age Trail. So generally what happens is, like uh Clay County Park, there is a private association um that maintains that park. Um, and so it's done largely by volunteers. I can tell you that I have shoveled out dozens and dozens of fireplaces there in the fall and in the spring. So, yeah, I mean, so I think it was in reference to uh, to maintenance.
So we would have to build that for someone to maintain it, though, wouldn't we?
Yes.
That assume that we'd have to build something like that.
Yeah.
To maintain.
And I think.
There's a lot of mixed signals going on that I'm a little concerned about. I hear a lot of pie in the sky dreams, and a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars just for a study implies a pie in the sky type of project. Now, I know a lot of people here are thinking, oh, it's federal money, whatever, but a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar study implies you might be planning out sixty miles of bike path. Right, Jeff?
Sure, yeah, yeah, that's identified as feasible.
All over. And I do appreciate that you want the extra distance for this, this grant, as opposed to the flat grant where you were actually put it into words that um eminent domain's not gonna be included, but there's a lot of right of way that can be claimed. For anybody who owns public property, there's a lot of right of way out there that you may not be aware of it. They could presumably take.
Hope the people are familiar with their properties and understand all the.
Hopefully it's.
And if he says he wants sixty miles of, of bike path, that means he, he doesn't think of right of way like you think of. He thinks of right of way like that's public property that private owners are currently using. There's one quote that I got you from. So that's, that's a concern for people that actually own property. And I'm tired of having, having to read all these grants is, is somebody that's private property. And then we have to talk about them and discuss them every three months, because you gotta apply for another grant. Can we just expedite this process and shut it down now before the feds shut it down every single time? Why do we have to research it every single time? Can we just do one grant a year that we can talk about? Why do we gotta, why do we gotta do this constantly?
The San Francisco Clay County elected me to work hard, and that's what I try to do, so.
All right, thank you. Other? I'm gonna speak again just to, oh, let this gentleman speak first and then give you another minute.
Kelvin Hansen, I live in Norway Township. Uh, I'm also on the Norway Township Board. And basically, that's why I'm here too, to you know, we've got uh, you know, a lot of miles are gonna go through uh Norway Township, basically from Clay County Park to the county line. So where that trail's gonna run is really gonna affect us. Um. Your grant, um, I heard you mention the National Park Service and the federal DOT. We've dealt with them. Good luck. Good luck. Because what we found happens is some people only stay in their jobs for two or three years, and they're shuffled off to someplace else. So then who are we dealing with now? Some new person and whatever. Um. Anyway, uh, like the two hundred and fifty thousand, you're, you're gonna be surprised when they come back, uh, because there's a, a federal DOT is gonna be involved in this, correct? On mapping all this stuff out.
Well, no, so, so the, so the, well.
Are you gonna apply?
This grant application, we would be hiring our own, and I heard someone say California, specifically not someone from California. We would be hiring a local uh, mo- most likely an engineering firm that has a good understanding of the reality on the ground.
That they're gonna have to be federally DOT approved, I assume.
Yes, I, I think that we'd have to follow all the, all the, what all the guidelines are called, but yes, yep.
If this goes through, yeah, we're talking about maintenance, but how much is the county gonna uh, you know, uh, have to hold for that? And quite honestly, uh, everybody can agree here that we need to fix our current roads that we got without adding on, plain and simple. Um. And I said, who's gonna maintain this thing once it's done? Are we gonna rely on federal funds? Are you relying on county funds? I mean, for the amount of use it's gonna get, I don't know. I think you're uh, you're opening up a big can of worms here on, on all of this project. I really think so. You know, and, and if the county's got a chip, get a lot of money for that, and people are gonna judge and say, hey, it's gotta go for maintaining the current roads we got and rebuilding that. So. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. One minute, oh, go ahead.
Uh, Todd Hine, yeah. I just wanted to point out a couple of different things. Um, you know, we can have as many studies as we want. Another twenty grants, but I mean, really, truly, it's about the people that live in this community that actually can give you the most uh response. I mean, funds from, even that, he, he might be a local person, but when you have people that actually live in the community, they have the most amount of information to get and to propose. Um, I drive by Cotton Park three times a day, morning, noon and afternoon. When I drive towards Burbank, I am lucky to see one person, maybe two people in one week walk that trail. So what is the demand is what I'm asking. Are you seeing that there's gonna be a flood of people coming into this county, going up and down Timber Road, using their bikes? If you go to the land, uh, to the landfill, there's so many bikes in that doggone place, and not because they bought new ones, there's just not that many cyclists anymore. Be real honest. Is there people walking all the time? Where are they walking? Where does a community want them to walk? They want them to walk in town. They don't want them to go out in the agricultural uh sector of the county. Why would you do that? If you go across the state of Iowa, the northern part or the southern part, there is not one town that has a bike trail that leads out into the agricultural community. Is there? I haven't seen one, and I've been by through that state several times. Do they? Do they have one? Does anyone have one? When you're talking about going on these roads up nineteen on Timber Road, what's the speed limit of that road? What is it? It's five, sixty-five? Some people drive it seventy. You're still talking about safety? Have you seen, you're in the agricultural community. This is an agricultural state. You have semis that have eighty thousand pounds on. You're gonna blow out one of these tires? Where is that tire? Where is that thing gonna go? It's gonna go across a ditch. It's gonna run right over that bike path, whatever. Can you imagine having a k- three kids, your wife and yourself, walking down this trail? Next to a road that goes fifty-five, sixty-five miles an hour and just wipes them out? You can't control one of these big vehicles going down this road. You know, if you were at a thirty-five miles an hour, which is over here right below the hill, that's fine. You know, twenty-five, you can feel a little safer, but do you really feel safe? Walking or driving on one of these paths on a road that's fifty-five, sixty-five miles an hour? This is not what you want, guys. And I don't know why you have to have a grant and waste the money to do this. I mean, it's the people here that should be able to make that decision. What a waste. I mean, it's just bureaucracy, waste money, period. So, I mean, and the other thing is, what about insurance? Let's go on nineteen or Timber Road. We put a bike path there. We have several different areas where you're gonna have to have the offer ramp to get into the property. Now, if you had concrete that, who's responsible for that? Insurance wise, it would be the landowner unless. Unless you're buying the property. So insurance wise, you got these bicy- bicyclists going across these roads. You're gonna come out of the approachment with a muddy tractor. I'll guarantee you, there's a muddy tractor gonna happen or a combine. And this bike bicyclist goes by, what are you gonna do? You're gonna go out there and sweep the mud off the road? For you guys to cross? Of course you're not. It's an insurance policy. That's gonna be us. We're gonna get sued. We're the landowner. We own the ground. You guys have that easement on there and. It, it's a waste. I mean, it's, it's just a waste and it's gonna bring us to liability, big liability. And we're gonna, we're gonna put it on you guys if it happens. So. And then you get some of these people that they can either walk or they can go ahead and use their bikes. They get too far away from the core, which is a city. They get too far away from home and they don't watch the clock and all of a sudden it's dark. Alright, so here's this bicycle bicyclist coming back in the dark without any lights on his, on the bike. Here are these other people that do not wear their vests with the lights on and they're walking with their family. A long way away in the dark. Does it make sense? To me, it doesn't make any sense at all. And you get on Timber Road or University Road, you're talking about safety. How can you go out there with maybe a mile between residents and feel safe? Do you really feel safe? You can feel safe down here at Cotton Park. It's right next to Vermillion. Which hardly ever gets used on this trail. You still have a trail here. You can fix this trail. It's still kind of a bike path. I mean, Burbank Road, University, um, nineteen, I mean, it's all dangerous for bicyclists. If you don't think it is dangerous, and I don't care if you put a path on it or not. You're gonna have people that might drive in the ditch. That might blow a tire and go into the ditch. That's why they have big ditches on both sides of the road. It's. To me, it, it doesn't make any sense. You got Clay County Park, you got Highline, it's a great area. Uh, go ahead and, uh, put some construction in there if, if you like, but. To me, uh, there's no way for a bike path to be out in the agricultural community. And, and, uh, being able to use those roads. It's just, it's not safe. And I don't know how many people. I don't know how many people it involves. My question is, how many people are gonna use the path? Go by Clay County Park or down by Cotton Park, drive there three times a day. You tell me how many people bike? You tell me how many people walk on that?
I, I walk that trail regularly and it's rare for me not to encounter another person on it. So, almost every single time.
I think it's time to sort of summarize and wrap up.
Alright, well, I, I am opposed to this, uh, completely. I'm opposed to the grant. I'm opposed to the walking trails that you projected, especially on those fast highways.
Thank you. Do you need one in a minute?
Yeah, I just wanted to reply to the safety issue and Todd addressed that. Um.
So we can't write on the.
But the.
Are you saying to me that we shouldn't be on the roads?
No, I'm not.
Address the.
I'll ask the commission, please. One at, one at a time.
So the safety issue, um, I drive Timber Road and Meckling Road every day for work, church. Recreation or on my way to a recreation event. I encounter bike riders. I am respectful of bike riders. I move over if it is possible. And I know there are those people that don't, but that does not go two ways. Not everybody rides single file. Not everybody takes just their half of the road. We have bike events. They're using the whole road. In the spring and the fall, every farmer here knows, there's a lot of equipment that goes up and down those roads. That equipment isn't going to get smaller. And those bicyclists and many motorists are not respectful of that farm equipment that goes up and down that road. And, uh, just to punctuate what Todd said about insurance and liability. And I know I asked this of the commission before. Who is liable? Who is liable? Even in a right of way, if I'm doing all my farming practices, the way I am supposed to do them. Somebody complains about something, it's not gonna be you guys that get sued. It's gonna be us. It's not your insurance that's gonna go up. It's not the cyclist's insurance that's gonna go up. It's mine. I work in the insurance industry. I know. Thank you.
Really quick.
Oh, sorry. My name is Grace Freeman and I live up, um, Pleasant Valley Township. And I just really appreciate you going for federal funds to bring them to my county. For something very far reaching, like this and far seeing into the future. Like you said. Nothing really might be substantiated, um, for like twenty years. So I might not be able around to see it, but I know that this is an investment in the people in. For Clay County and Yankton. What a wonderful idea to at least check the feasibility of such a study. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So and then.
Just real quick, I'm hoping on your study. I mean, I, I'm a bike rider. Don't look like one. I tell you. And I ride it quite a bit in the summertime. I ride up to Spirit Mound. But, and I also, uh, haul big equipment down the highway. And what really irritates me is I'll be hauling over with equipment and these bicyclers are biking out to Spirit Mound and they're driving on Highway nineteen. Cause, and I almost hit one lady and I actually stopped my truck, pulled over, waited for her to come to me and I said, what are you doing? Driving down the road. And she's like, well, we can't drive on the shoulder because there's, we get too many flat tires. So I'm taking her response out there. I get it, but I said, I'd rather have a flat tire than be dead. So that's what I told her. But that's something you could bring up to the, to the state that they should broom that off once in a while so they keep these bikers on the shoulders. Second thing is, is I never ride on the highway, even with a ten foot shoulder on. It scares the shit out of me, okay? So I ride on a gravel road. I don't have a, a bike with those little tires on there. I have a big tired bike. And ride down gravel roads and I never run into anybody. And I got miles and miles and miles of gravel road. And I can ride all the way to Yankton if I want, on a gravel road and never hardly run into anybody, okay? So please look at that in your study and study how many trucks and cars go on. You know, and I ride on three thirteen, which is a major gravel road. If you ride on some of those other roads, there's never anybody on it. So I would be in favor of getting people bigger tires and we just buy them bigger tires so they can ride on the damn gravel road. That's my, I mean, look at those gravel roads. It doesn't cost us a dime to let somebody ride on a gravel road.
Okay, uh, and I think, uh, Barb, well, just be able to get.
My name is Siri Merklin. I'm from Yankton County. And your first proposal with the green line is you're gonna go right by my house. First of all, I'm wondering, what does this bike path connect? What is there to see? Is there a nice moving shop?
There's a list.
Is there a bar?
I hate to ask you through the list.
Anything? Is there a campground? Is there anything for it to connect? So people are gonna use this bike trail? Not a damn thing.
Well, actually.
I've lived down there. I've been associated with this property for seventy years. I can tell you, there's nothing. Now, there's a river and that river changes every day. There's access points, if you want, like the Highlines. You can get to know some of the private owners there that have boat ramps. They would let you in on it. But to put a trail in there, when we were down there, when I was younger, my father-in-law had cars stripped. He had cattle butchered. He would come up from the river because the river was right there. You'd butcher his cows, take the quarters and leave. Now, I'm not saying anything about that, that maybe a bicyclist would do it. But it makes access for four-wheelers, it makes asset, access for that. So think about that too. And I'll tell you what, I see those, I got a shot.
Right, first of all, I just have to do a quick rebut to Mr. Heine with, uh, bike path in the cotton park. I was one of the ones twenty-five, twenty-nine years ago to really push to have that. I run down there every day. I probably, and I walk down every day with my dog. There's always, it's being used. At the beginning, not so much. You're driving by. You're not seeing each the east end and the west end. So I do think it's used. What I'm hearing, and I understand everybody's issue with property rights and maybe it's not safe. Don't think it's safe to have a bike path next to a road. If that's the case, like I said earlier, then we need to share the roads. Because Dave, you're right, mountain biking or the big tires, we do both. But you know, there's times, those of us who are avid cyclists. We wanna get out on our road bikes. And I think we can share it. We get over and. We are trying to reach out to the cyclist community that you have to, you see somebody coming, you have to line up. I know when I got right, I have a mirror on my helmet. I have a blinky light in the back and I have a blinky light in the front so everybody can see me. And I'm always watching to know what's behind, what's in front of me. So. I happen to like that. I've ridden all over the world on bikes and there's lots of places that do have paths where you can feel safe. I've ridden in places where there's not. There's a lot of traffic and it works. It works. You can do it. Bikes and traffic can be together. Be it in rural or not rural. So I'm hearing a lot of negativity toward this. So if it happens and we don't do this, then I think we need to start educating people that need to share the road. Because there's a lot of us that wanna be outside. We wanna recreate, be it walking, biking, whatever. But I think we need to share and be respectful of each other. And I think that's some of the problem.
Thank you. I see no other commenters. I think it's time to go back to the agenda. Um, and this is a resolution, um, for the raise grant application. And we've had a motion, I believe, in a second. Um, so is there any further discussion among commissioners?
Just one point, when they were talking safety, I know when we did the first grant. Um, there was townships out there that called their towns and townships association. And that association is telling them to pass a resolution to not allow these to go across townships. Because they're liable if they cross their township road.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I almost hesitate to, uh, think back thirty-five years. I, uh, the other people's money argument of, of taking federal grants for, for, for local use. I've been part of lots of grant requests and I've gained a lot of, uh, federal money for use here in South Dakota. In my old job at Geological Survey, there was a number of grants that I helped write and helped spend the money from. But, uh, the instance that comes up hits my memory. I thought about this, uh, last time we, we were together with you guys. That, uh, back in the early mid nineties, when the bridge to Nebraska, the bridge to nowhere. Uh, was, uh, being proposed, I had a, a person. It wasn't in a public meeting and I was in no public office at the time. Just asked me offhand what I thought of the bridge project. And the feasibility study that was being proposed to, uh, take a look and see if the, the bridge would be a good idea. And asked me what I thought of the bridge project. And I said, well, that depends on which hat I'm wearing. When I'm wearing my local hat, well, I'm all for it. This was before I owned a business that was really positively impacted. It expanded my business area by fifty percent when I, uh, when the bridge went through. So as a, as a local person, I was all in favor of it. As a state, uh, as a citizen of the state, I'm gonna kind of, yeah, kind of, kind of for it. Not extremely for it, like I was as a local. But as a, uh, federal, uh, federal taxpayer. I was completely against it. So it depends on which hat you're wearing. And whether you, you're thinking in terms of using that money here rather than in Miami. Or in Washington DC or in, for a new tunnel at Boston. Uh, from that v- viewpoint, I'm, I'm really for it. And I gotta say that. Todd's, uh, Todd's comments really submitted my, my, uh, support for the project. For the grant application. So each of his points really made me understand that there's need for more discussion. And that's just what this funds. So, off the soapbox.
And I, uh, just before we move off of it, the last meeting, just impromptu, I have, uh. ours and Betty's contact info, it's just back piece of paper here. I'll leave this over there. Anybody who would like to be emailed or called, however you prefer. If we get this funding, if any of this occurs, I promise that I will reach out to you and let you know when the first meeting occurs. So go ahead and sign up if you want. I've got like about five of those now. Um, none of them are, are excited about trails, so. I, I will be happy to take it because all of these comments are valid. All of these are important things that are why.
And you're hiring a local company to do this stuff, Maxon, right?
You know, we all agreed to have a meeting whether we got the grant or not. So even if we don't get the grant, we're having a public meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, excellent.
Yep.
Yep.
Cause we're gonna, one way or another, we're gonna get to the end of this.
Does it, is it have to be bike trails? Is that like the stipulation? It could be any type of trail or recreation system, like even something like a destination spot like Spirit Mount. Like for instance, I imagine there's a lot of people who are like, this isn't, nobody's gonna come out here, who's gonna use this? Who's gonna possibly wanna come out here and walk this? Well, clearly, it's a huge economic benefit and we're busy all the time. And people come from all over and meet people from Nebraska, Iowa, Minnesota on the mound all the time. And, uh, who are spending days down here, say they love it. So it's like, I just wonder, there's a lot of flexibility written into this. Is that correct? Potentially. Doesn't have to be a bike.
No.
We'll do patrol of that, so.
Any further comments? I'm a part of the commissioners. Right, hearing none? Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. And thank you all for coming. I appreciate it. Um, and I, I hope you'll keep coming. Um, and, uh, we'll stop, uh, you know, and, and, and have a voice in. Okay, so our meeting will continue.
When's your term? When's your? We know when their terms are up. Take them out.
On the website.
Those three in the middle are the problem.
Those three in the middle are the problem.
Here's how stupid I am. I drive on the gravel.
No, you guys are dying.
Otherwise, Kelly can't keep up. Unless you're slow enough. You can't take her on the oil road. She can't follow me on the oil road. She can't keep up.
Our meeting is still in session, uh, so if folks can.
Thanks for your time and your service.
Thank you for coming.
Alright, that's the important ones, though, right? Wick contract.
Yeah, so the Wick contract, I set on agenda.
Betty, get him out of here.
Maybe not today.
Well, it'd be okay. As long as he doesn't throw punches.
I don't know, then I'd sue. I've never seen him before.
No, he's new to me.
Alright. Well, that was a more exciting than usual one, honestly.
It's good.
And there's, uh, one item left on the agenda. Um, and I, I, and it's the, the Wick, Wick contract with the South Dakota Department of Health. And they might wanna share with the whole commission.
We finally got the Wick contract, and, um, I've talked to Lisa about it, and Lisa is comfortable with the con- contract. Um, but this contract is only till the end of May, so we'll have to go through this again shortly. So, that's frustrating to Lisa and everybody involved. But Lisa has told me this morning, as long as Michael is, has reviewed it and is comfortable with it, she is. So, Michael, are you good with it?
I've reviewed it as well. I mean, of course, it's backdated. I found a, I think there's a couple of little grammatical errors in the, in the captions, well, just in the sectioning, but it doesn't, I mean, I think from a perspective of what we're engaged with in the county, that's not anything I'm gonna concern, I'm not gonna concern myself with that. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's one of those contracts where I think I've articulated this before. It's, you know, our hands are mostly tied in this. If we want funding, we kind of have to play by their rules. I don't see anything in there that's egregious. I agree, um, that it appears to be in order in, in, in doing what it's been doing in the past, and what we likely want it to do till the end of May.
Alright, thank you.
Also, Lisa told me this morning that she is, does have a meeting with the state today to find out more of her responsibilities. So, but she is good with the contract as long as Michael is.
And they did furnish us with a job description as well, um, that Lisa has.
Thanks for that work.
Dave, thank you, Dave. Allow the chairman to sign the contract.
One second.
There's a motion and a second. Further discussion? I mean, the WIC service is incredibly valuable. So, if there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
This is bringing you guys up. I'm gonna try to be. We have, they have another meeting at one.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not trying to interrupt you, right?
No, no.
You're good. You're good.
I, I packed, stacked the chairs in before. I don't think you were quite as high as that first one. I think you should keep it more to like, uh.
Six. Yeah. Set him on that, those, uh, stands over there.
So, the last item on the, well, I don't know, is, are, are there, uh, is there anything, uh, with respect to Clay County Park?
Nope.
Or building project updates?
They're still nice. They're still going. I don't know. Scott has anything?
Well, I think that was for executive session, unless, building project updates?
That was talking about, uh, possible. Fill in that position, the candidate, if I could be able to offer more than the starting wage. That's what I'm reporting.
Okay.
If you want an update, I can give you an update on what's kind of going on. Um, they're progressing. They're still up on second floor working. Um, they're starting to put the sprinkler out into the main space now on second floor. It's all gonna be copper out there. Hangers aren't coppers. If they go in there, look, I'll be too concerned. The hangers will be copper. Just have these, uh, galvanized ones up here for now, so I can get things going. Um, got the ceiling grid and the registered deeds. Office, they're working in the state attorney's office today. They've been in there about two or three days from the sprinkler lines. Fishing, uh, the, the wall around the duck work in there. So, um, we'll be able to hold them out there today, so we can get that open and ready for Mike tomorrow. Install, uh, rather very large, uh, electrical panel on second floor, the north stairwell. And that's kind of it. They're starting to put together plans for, for the sprinkler in the large courtroom. Gone up, did some exploration, and, uh, all that ceiling's built. There's, I'm not sure what you call it, that run east and west in there. Uh, gone up, so that ceiling that's laid up in there is this, the ceiling panel's been cut down, and it sits inside a framework, so it does some torreting in there. Pretty confident that that can come down, because it's not glued. It's just, you know, it's just screwed up there in a frame. And then underneath there, believe it or not, there's some sheet rock. And you cut out the sheet rock, and above that's your, your high beam. So, pretty confident they can run the sprink, run the sprinkler lines in there through the faces of just decorative pieces. Uh, the sprinkler hasn't come out through the faces, so pretty confident that that's what's gonna happen. But still kind of waiting for the architects to say okay on that. Nutshell, um, that room ready down there. I need to invite you back.
We, can we, can we move back?
Then they're gonna say, well, we gotta hold court down there, because you're in the courtroom. So, we're gonna wait to see how that kind of flows together. So, sorry.
Uh, we were, we were getting excited.
They have first dibs.
Yeah.
Getting home taken.
Oh, yeah, um, I kind of see how that's, see how that comes together up there. We're supposed to start down the fourth of March. Kind of push it ahead a little. We're trying to push it further up on the calendar, uh, since there wasn't that big jury trial, so we could kind of create some more opportunities for it to get worked done this week. Maybe next week, I'll get in that courtroom. I'm not sure. Kind of working on that right now. So, that's kind of that project in a nutshell.
Thank you. That helps. You know, in, in terms of, um, changing salaries and so on, we probably can't do that at this meeting, because it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, but we can put it on the agenda for the next. I was gonna say, you've got it, kind of got a specific person in mind, so I didn't know if that could be an executive session item.
Did we open it up? We did advertise?
Oh, well, if it's, if it's a specific individual hiring decision.
No, I haven't, I haven't decided whether I've been hired as an individual, but it's long, find out if, you know, if I have that option.
This, this is a negotiation.
Obviously.
Yeah, if this is a negotiation matter, you can go into executive session for it. Michael, does that sound right to you?
That sounds appropriate to me, if it's been advertised.
Okay.
Like, the job posting has been.
Alright, so I would accept a motion to go into executive session to discuss, um, negotiations.
Okay.
It's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So.
It's, it's not involved in this, but, um, Lane told me that, uh, Dan LaMoge died unexpectedly last night, so we need to do something.
Yes.
He's the sheriff. He had a heart attack.
Wow, really?
I heard that last morning, too.
So, did you know that, Michael?
No, I didn't know that. Um, that's all news to me, and obviously very surprising news. You said it's a heart attack?
Yeah, they found him in the ditch this morning. I can't, I'm assuming Dan was about my age. I was gonna say.
Yeah. Wow. No, that's. That's really sad.
I've got seven sins already, so.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Alright, so, um, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So, second.
So, motion and several seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carries. Is there any further business to come before us? Hearing none?
Second.
So, motion and a second to adjourn. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.